Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. It's good to see everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. And we are going to start like we always do with introductions. And we're going to start with our clerks.
Good evening. I am Christine Smith, Clerk to the Board. Welcome.
Good evening. I am Melissa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good evening. I am Yvette Townsend Ingram, Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioner at Large.
Good evening. I am Mecklenburg County Commissioner Elaine Powell. I represent District One, which is Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm George Dunlap, elected by the people of District Three.
Good evening. My name is Lee Altman, County Commissioner, serving at large. And I have the privilege and honor of also serving as Vice Chair. Welcome.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. My name is Mark Jarrell. I've been elected by the people of District Four. Also have the honor of serving as Chair.
Good evening and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin. I have the pleasure of serving as County Commissioner at Large.
Good afternoon. My name is Vilma De Leek, and I represent the most powerful people in the district. That's District Two. Will all my seniors stand up, please? All of you, my seniors, you know how old you are. One person is a senior there. Thank you. Thank you. So the rest of you young men are 18 to 19 years old. Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Good evening. I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five.
Good evening. I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell, and I'm elected by the people of District Six.
Good evening. I'm Dina DiOrio, County Manager.
Good evening. Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
Well, now that we're finished with introductions, I am going to turn it over to Commissioner Elaine Powell, who will lead us in the invocation tonight and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are uncertain times. And as I was thinking about what I wanted to pray for in public tonight, I thought about the history of prayer in my life. How it started at bedtime with me kneeling next to my parents and reciting a prayer that ended, "If I should die before I wake, I pray the Lord my soul to take," and then silently praying that I wouldn't die overnight. My prayer life has evolved since then. As an elected leader, I pray silently all the time, at stoplights, on phone calls and meetings, at the Community Building Initiative breakfast, on my long walks in nature. Quite often, I'm praying for the ability to hear, to hear the people I represent, to hear the people I love, to hear from community members. When we appoint residents to serve on advisory boards, we are intentional about looking for people who have the ability to consider different perspectives. So for 2025, my New Year prayer is, "Tonight, I pray for unity. I pray that everyone listening will think about all of our differences and celebrate them and become more mindful, re-mindful, and disciplined about the importance of considering differences, valuing them, and honoring them." We all have different life experiences, perspectives, and skill sets. I believe this is a vital component of creating a path to unity. Unity doesn't mean we agree with each other all the time. It means that we agree that we are going to seek to listen, seek to understand, and commit to doing our best together. It is the opposite of division. As we face uncertain times, I think it's important to keep unity at the front of our mind. We are all brothers and sisters, and I will keep praying for unity. It is the bedrock of a strong community. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a couple of things before we get moving with the agenda. I want to thank Commissioner Powell for opening us up with the invocation. I specifically asked her to do it because I wanted her to kick off 2025, and I wanted it to start with some really great energy. She's an amazing public servant, but a better human being. So thank you, Commissioner Powell. I also want to take this opportunity to recognize a former colleague who is here. It is so great to see her, and I'd like her to stand to be recognized. Former Commissioner Susan Harden is here. A fierce advocate standing there, guys. All right. With that being said, let's move forward with our agenda. We're going to move to awards and recognition. First up is a proclamation that will be read by Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell. It's a proclamation for Mama Rose's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. All right. This proclamation is in honor of Mama Rose, and her family is here to accept it. And so would this be appropriate time for them to go to the podium?
Yeah, they can go to the podium. Exactly.
All right. All right. Whereas affectionately known in the community as Mama Rose, Sister Rosa and Pastor Rosa Lee Marion, she devoted her life to combating homelessness, working tirelessly to provide shelter, nourishment, advocacy, and programs designed to break the cycle of homelessness and offer long-term solutions. And whereas Mama Rose's leadership brought about meaningful changes in the lives of those impacted by homelessness, offering not just immediate relief, but also pathways to self-sufficiency, healing, and long-term stability for individuals and families in need. And whereas through her efforts with the Harvest Center of Charlotte and Beauty for Ashes Ministry, Mama Rose inspired countless community members, organizations, and local leaders to come together in addressing the root causes of homelessness and to work towards sustainable solutions that address both immediate and long-term needs. And whereas Mama Rose served as a beacon of hope and compassion in Mecklenburg County, tirelessly advocating for the homeless while building partnerships that foster dignity, respect, and opportunity for all. And whereas her work exemplified the spirit of community, demonstrating how collective action can lead to meaningful change and make a lasting impact in the fight to end homelessness. Now therefore, that the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2025 and January 22, 2025, as Mama Rose's Day in Mecklenburg County, and commend its observance to all citizens. Signed, Mark Jarrell, Chair. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All right. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, eyes have it. Congratulations to the family and everybody who's representing Mama Rose.
Mr. Chairman, Mama Rose's daughter, Ms. Yolanda Kelty Dowthett, is here. Thank you. And Tia Patterson. Yeah.
Yolanda Kelty Dowthett, you did very well. I am Pastor Rosa's oldest daughter, and behind me stands a community that is thankful and grateful for this proclamation. I am 50 years old, and my mother has served the community for 50 years, feeding, clothing, and sheltering the homeless. And I am excited about this day and this month because she instilled in myself and my sister the need for us to go out and be of service to our community. She grew up in Greenville, the old Fairview Homes. And she told me that she could have left and did something totally different, but she wanted to go back into the community that she toe up. My mother had a gang in the old Fairview Homes. They called themselves the Magnificent Seven, and they used to rob and steal and kill. But she turned that into a passion for Christ, and she stole and went back and took captive of those who were lost. And I'm thankful and grateful for this proclamation from this board. I live in Atlanta, and I've had a journey to get here, and I would not have missed this for the world. Her church stands behind me. You all, wave your hands. The church is in the Oakland neighborhood, and they are still continually feeding the homeless and sheltering the lost. And that is what ministry should be, and thank you all for acknowledging that. And my hope and my prayer is that this will not be the last time that you all see me. I want to turn this into the equivalent to the MLK Day, where we do a day of service. Are you all with me? Amen. So we're going to, for the month of January, just get into the community, the west side, the north side, the east side, and the south side, because they need a little help too. And we're going to go into the community and serve. And so I'm going to give the mic to my niece.
All right. Just to echo what my auntie said, my grandma brings the city out, if you didn't know, the east, north, and the south. But I didn't see a lot of the crime that she raised in Fairview Homes, but I definitely saw the impact. As just 25, shout out to March the Pisces. I'll be turning 25, and my whole life, I've always seen nothing but this. And Mama Rose Day was every day and every year. So being able to see the impact of having a Sister Rose Day is phenomenal. And as we see statistics about homelessness raising each and every year, I think making this a homeless awareness and how homelessness is an issue that's multifaceted, I think this is definitely something that is phenomenal, like she said, that we're going to turn this to the Charlotte MLK Day.
Thank you. Please come down and let us shake your hand, please.
What was that?
Please come down so we can shake your hand.
Oh. And I want to thank you, Tia, for being an advocate and getting this done. You told me when she passed away that you want to get it done, and I like you. You're a woman of your word, so thank you.
Do you start at that end or just come around? Just shake it. Shake it.
You all give us what we need to go on and fight. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. I live down Lord Street.
She always.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I did.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing us her story.
I say yes.
Thank you so much. Of course. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you. Of course.
It's a great part of this job right here, I'll tell you. Next on the agenda, we have our D9 family in the house tonight. All right. So we've got a proclamation for Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, the Beta-Rho-Sigma Chapter's 75th anniversary. And I have asked an Omega man tonight.
What can I say? Read. Indeed, my pleasure. And you probably noticed those handsome gentlemen in those beautiful blazers up there. So if you guys would please stand from the Beta-Rho-Sigma Chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity while I read this proclamation. It is my honor. Whereas Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Inc., is an international community service-driven organization that was founded on January 9, 1914, in Washington, DC, on the campus of the Howard University. And whereas on February 8, 1950, James A. Clark, Forrest Cloud, Willie Reed, David Clay Johnson, William Blueford, Edson Blackman, George Butler, Chester Donald, Howard Morland, and Clarence Morland chartered the Beta-Rho-Sigma Chapter, a graduate chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Inc., Charlotte, North Carolina. And whereas two of its chapter members, Quentin W. Goodman and James A. Clark, have been recognized with the organization's highest honor, membership in its distinguished service chapter. And whereas guided by their core values of brotherhood, scholarship, and service, for the past 75 years, the men of Beta-Rho-Sigma Chapter have worked tirelessly to provide critical services and support to our communities in Charlotte Mecklenburg. And whereas the men of the Beta-Rho-Sigma Chapter continuously demonstrate their commitment to community service by organizing educational enhancement programs at local schools across grade levels, partnering and volunteering at the Second Harvest Food Bank, volunteering at the Ronald McDonald House of Charlotte, co-sponsoring an annual health and career fair at Johnson C. Smith University, and providing wellness and educational resources through its affiliated Sigmas of Charlotte Foundation, Inc. And whereas the work of the chapter is furthered through its youth affiliate group, the Sigma-Beta Club, which currently serves more than 40 boys ages 11 to 18 years old, and has served more than 500 young men since the club was organized in 1992, preparing the next generation of leaders for the future through demonstrating leadership, ideals of scholarship, positive relationships, and community service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners recognize and congratulate Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Inc., Beta-Rho-Sigma Chapter, on its 75th year of service in Charlotte, North Carolina, and does hereby proclaim, February 1, 2025, as Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Inc., Beta-Rho-Sigma Chapter Day in Mecklenburg County, and encourage all citizens to join us in this special observance, this 22nd day of January, 2025. Mark D. Jarrell, Chair, Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners. Is this such a motion?
Sound move. Second.
All right. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. Motion carries unanimously, Madam Chair.
My name is Brother Toby Powell. I serve as the first Vice President of the Beta-Rho-Sigma Chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Inc. We're honored and thankful for the proclamation as we continue to move forward with another 75 years of exemplifying brotherhood, scholarship, and service, and with our programming of social action, education, and bigger and better business. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I like being fair, Mr. Chair, and we've invited every sorority that has.
To take a picture.
To come take a picture.
That's right.
So I want the brothers to come and take that picture. They can put it in a service manual.
There we go. I took a picture of you all that I'm going to send, but y'all come down and take a picture right here in the center. And we're going to do this very quickly, please, and just the way you lined up up there, line up down here.
Shouldn't he come shake? And Mark, shouldn't he?
You want the President to shake? Mr. President, why don't you come shake hands with us? The President shake hand, and the rest take.
Keith, I did this just for you, man.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Congrats. Congratulations.
Hard-working brother.
She's yours. Congratulations. Y'all fill in right. Everybody fill in. Judge. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Don't let's get everybody filled in.
I know. You watch me twice a week. You're on TV now.
Thank you, George, for that.
I know how important this manual is.
That's right. That's right. We got space in the back.
Short to be in the back. You too short to be in the back. So. Thank you. Work it out. Work it out. Work it out. Why them tall people in front?
Everyone okay now. You're looking good. All right.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Nice to see you. You doing well?
Yeah. Thank you for your work, big women. Thank you so much.
All right. While they're making their way up, I'm going to ask Anna London to come to the podium, please. And you brothers of Phi Beta Sigma, don't ever say a cap and Omegas didn't do anything for you.
I apologize.
The next item on our agenda is a special presentation. It's a Charlotte Works Awards presentation. And I will turn it, actually, I'll turn it over to Rocky. I'll turn it over to Rocky McGregor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman Altman, the Board, County Commissioners, Dina DiOrio, our County Manager. Greetings. I'm Rocky McGregor, and I am the Board Chair of Charlotte Works. Also have with me, as has already been noted, our CEO, Anna London, and I also have a fellow Board Member, William Haygood, that's also here. And if I'm not mistaken, we have Board Member Roger Johnson and Anthony, Board Member Anthony It is a true honor to stand before you tonight to recognize an individual who has dedicated so much to the growth and prosperity of our community. Today, we celebrate County Commissioner George Dunlap as the recipient of the Charlotte Works Workforce Development Champion Award. Didn't see that coming. To speak out of school just a bit, I call myself taking George to dinner so I could get just a little bit of roasting information from him. I got so caught up in the conversation that I didn't make any notes. We just had great fellowship. I really appreciated that time last week. George, the award is presented to recognize the exceptional leadership and dedication of a leader in fostering economic growth and workforce development. While Commissioner Dunlap was Chair of the Board of the County Commissioners for the last eight years, he also served as one of our chief local elected officials at Charlotte Works alongside Mayor Vialaus. Commissioner Dunlap has long been a driving force behind initiatives to create pathways to success for individuals and families in Mecklenburg County. His leadership has fostered meaningful investments in workforce development, empowering people with the skills and opportunities needed to thrive in an ever-changing job market. Through his steadfast commitment, Commissioner Dunlap has shown the workforce development is more than a policy priority. It is a promise to ensure that every resident has the chance to build a better future. Whether he is the champion of equitable access to education, advocating for innovative training programs, or forging partnerships that connect local businesses with local talent, excuse me, his impact is both significant and lasting. Commissioner Dunlap, your vision and dedication have inspired all of us to think bigger and work harder to create a thriving community. Your leadership reminds us of what is possible when we invest in people and believe in their potential. On behalf of Charlotte Works, our Board, the CEO, and our fantastic team of countless lives you have touched, it is my privilege to present you with the Workforce Development Champion Award. Thank you for your tireless efforts, your unwavering commitment, and your belief in the power of community. Thank you. So we also, we also just want to provide you with this small token of our appreciation. And we also want to share the impact under the leadership of Commissioner George Dunlap has made in the last eight years. So we're going to provide you with this, but I just want to call out a couple of numbers here that I think are relevant. The economic impact in the eight years that you were Chair of the Board, $1,332,817,489.68. A unique individual served 150,943, with 73% of those employed one year after service. Thank you, sir.
So Rocky, I want to give, Anna, you have anything else there? No? I want to give George the opportunity to, Commissioner Dunlap, the opportunity to speak, and then like to get a picture. And you'll get a picture down in the front with these many awards.
I'll be brief because we've got a long meeting tonight, but thank you, Charlotte Works. Thank all of you for your service. I appreciate those extra two years of leadership that you put on.
Maybe a six year.
But really, workforce development is really important and essential to this community. I really thought my friend here should have gotten that award, but I'm thankful. I really am thankful, and I appreciate when people recognize the work that you do in the community. Thank you so much.
Hey, Rocky, Anna, you guys come out in the middle, will you?
How much money did the county get? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations again to Commissioner Dunlap, well deserved. The next presenter, we got another presentation. It's a ceremonial gavel presentation. I'll turn it over to the county manager for this.
Wait for the, wait for him to come back to his seat.
Somebody cue the music, please.
Thank you, Chair Jorrell. It is my great honor and privilege to present this ceremonial gavel to the outgoing Chairman of the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners, George Dunlap. Commissioner Dunlap represents District Three and has served as our Board Chair for the last six years. He has been a Board Member since 2008, and he was our first District Representative to serve as the Chair. During his six years, Chairman Dunlap has made significant strides in Board initiatives and priorities. One example is our MECC pre-K program, which we launched with 604-year-olds. Today, we have almost 1,900 students in the program. His commitment to access to healthcare means the county has not only expanded our services, but we now have three mobile units to help us do the work. Chair Dunlap was at the helm of our elected leadership during the pandemic. This was uncharted territory for the, for the country in Mecklenburg County, but he stood firm and helped keep the county moving forward. Commissioner Dunlap was instrumental in improving the lives of Mecklenburg County residents through his dedication and commitment. He has logged countless hours at community events and meetings to show his care for our residents. He has helped to move forward Mecklenburg County's federal and state legislative agendas in many positive and meaningful ways. Commissioner Dunlap will continue to proudly represent Mecklenburg County on the national stage as Second Vice President, Second Vice Chair of NACO, the National Association of Counties. That means, of course, that he will be the President of NACO in two years. Thank you, George, for your leadership and partnership. I truly appreciate you as an affected and admired leader for Mecklenburg County. This gavel is inscribed with the Years of Service 2020-2024, since you also received a previous gavel for your Years of Service of 2018 to 2020. And with that, I present this gavel to you for your six years of service as Chairman.
We have a couple of Commissioners that would like to share some remarks, and I am going to start with our Vice Chair, Commissioner Alton.
Well, Mr. Chairman Dunlap, or Commissioner Dunlap, when it drains, it pours. And we're all so thrilled for you. I wanna, I wanna tell a very quick story. When I first started showing up to events and first met Commissioner Dunlap, and he was running for reelection at a certain point, and my then 15-year-old son picked him out of everybody as his favorite Commissioner. So, you have to ask, what makes a 15-year-old boy see? Like, what, what specific did he see in just, you know, a half-hour public engagement session? And I'll tell you what it is in my opinion. It's honesty and authenticity and a willingness to just say, say what it is, even if it's not what people wanna hear, even if it's not the answer they were hoping for. And that is so hard to find in our elected officials. And it's, it's really just an incredibly valuable, important trait that speaks to the depth of your integrity and your knowledge and wisdom that, that you have garnered over so many years of service that our whole community benefits from, and absolutely this Board benefit, benefits from. And lastly, I personally have benefited from on so many occasions. So, congratulations, mazel tov.
Commissioner Griffin.
Chairman Emeritus Dunlap, it's been an absolute pleasure. I just wanted to say, it, it took you to, over several weeks, to get me to agree to come out of retirement. That just tells you how much I think about you and your service to this community. I, I first met you when you joined the Board of Education back in 95. Knew of you somewhat. But I never forget and will always remember the commitment you spoke about in 1995 about your commitment to children and students as a, a school bus driver way back in the day. And you continue to carry that commitment, not only just as a school bus driver, but as a school board, former school board member, a current member of Mecklenburg County Board of County Commission, and also your service as a national leader. There are a couple of things I, I want to say, and, and you know when you've done good. Several weeks ago, I had lunch with some friends at the old law firm I used to work with, Sassa Law Firm. And one of the young ladies, that's a lawyer there, said, "I remember Dunlap, he was my dear officer." So, you continue to, to have a positive impact on those that you, that you meet, and you'll continue to have that, that positive impact on those that you will meet in the future. I have no doubt about that. And I appreciate your continuing service and your love for service as you serve not only here locally, but nationally with NACO. So, George, congratulations.
Congrats, yes. Commissioner Powell, I was waiting.
I'm, I'm gonna be real quick, 'cause I didn't know, and I would've had a really long speech if I did. But I'm really glad that Dina mentioned the pandemic, because I cannot imagine anyone handling it better as Chairman than you did. And it was so comforting, and so I'm really glad that was a part of the recognition, because you deserve that. You deserve all the recognition, but especially the pandemic. You did such an outstanding job. And for becoming, like, being open to really listening to how important it is to protect natural resources. I, I mean, I, we were talking about invasive species, and he didn't really understand it. And he went through the forest with me to collect invasive species. He had a bouquet of them when we were done, because he had no idea how many invasive species there were. And I, I really admire that. You know, like, instead of just shutting, shutting it out, you're like, well, what is it? And so, thank you for that. And thank you, I was his Vice Chair for five years. Thank you for always being in my corner. I'm always in yours. And so, when we were in advanced leadership, I was in advanced leadership at the School of Government with Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell. We had no idea the Chairman was gonna come be part of the ceremony to give us our graduation diplomas. That meant so much to us. And in these moments of your recognition, I just wanna say, I carry that. And so, you have made a difference, a positive difference. I appreciate you. Thank you. You deserve way more than a gavel. It should be golden.
Thank you all for your comments. I'm, mine are gonna be really, really brief. Couple of things. I just double down and echo the sentiments of, of all of my colleagues, particularly when I think about the pandemic and navigating that. It was a, a real lesson in leadership. And it's one that I certainly will never forget. I actually gave you the, the, the moniker of Chair Emeritus. I'm gonna claim that. And the last thing I would say is, beyond how much we appreciate your service and, and what you've meant to not just the Board, but the community, I would say, you're a hard act to follow, my brother. But thank you so much for what you've done. I appreciate how you've tried your best to prepare me. You've done it in a way with the, just such a, a giving spirit, an open heart, and rooting for my success in this role as Chair. And you, I'll just remember that forever, and I can't thank you enough. So, thank you for that. Thank you, everyone. All right, next up on the agenda is public appearance. Now, this is different from the budget hearing, everybody, so don't get alarmed. We only, we have a couple folks for public appearance. I'm gonna ask Chris Moxley and Todd Collins to come to that podium while I read this. Public appearance is the period during the Board's regular meeting that members of the public are provided the opportunity to speak on matters not appearing on the agenda. Members of the public who appear during the public appearance portion of a regular meeting may discuss any matter within the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners except for the following types of matters. A matter which appears on the agenda of that meeting of the Board, a matter which concerns the candidacy of a person seeking public office, including the candidacy of the person appearing before the Board, a request that the Board considers funding a certain program or activity either from the current budget or by inclusion of future budget, such funding requests would be made at the Board's annual budget public hearing. The time limit for speaking is three minutes, unless there are four or more speakers who wish to speak concerning the same matter, in which case, all persons wishing to speak on the same matter will be considered a group and given a total of 10 minutes in which to speak. The group, four more speakers, would divide the 10 minutes among themselves. The Board reserves the right to alter these rules on a case-by-case basis as necessary for the efficient and effective conduct of business. Members of the Board will not engage in dialogue with public appearance speakers. Comments will be received and followed up on as applicable by the county staff on the members of the Board. Handouts or tokens shall be given to the clerk for distribution to Board members at the conclusion of the meeting. Our speakers tonight are my good friends Todd Collins and Chris Moxley. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to be here with you guys. My name is Todd Collins. I'm CEO of Red Hill Ventures, an investment firm that's based right here in Mecklenburg County. Here with me, my, my friend and fellow entrepreneur, Chris Moxley, CEO of 704 Shop. And, and I even have my daughter, who is, was out of school today and wanted to see how the, the county worked and what county leadership looked like. So, thank you, guys, for letting her be here. I'm here, we are here, representing a coalition of privately-held business owners, minority privately-held business owners. And we would like to tell you guys, thank you for the work that you guys have done toward this community over the years. And actually, Chris has created something special for you guys, custom design, which I think you'll like. But before we actually show you that, we do want to let you know that for 2025, we are optimistic. We're hopeful and excited about all the opportunities that will be provided this year. And we do want to give you guys a charge, and we know that you guys are hardworking. Commissioner Dunlap, we wanna thank you for the years of service that you have done. Dina, congratulations on your retirement, you've done a wonderful job. And Chairman Jorrell, I'll, I'll tell you this. I met Chairman Jorrell years ago before he was a County Commissioner, and we were working on a project in East Charlotte that was in destitute. And Commissioner, Chairman Jorrell saw a vision long before anybody else did in participating in that vision. I'll tell you, it's something that I'll, I'll never forget, and I really do appreciate. So, but I will tell you this. You guys have done a wonderful job supporting privately-held minority businesses. But I do wanna let you know the best type of support the county can do is actually spending county money with those businesses. And I know that you have a lot of businesses on your radar, but I'm going to give you just three or four additional that I want you to sort of just tuck away in your mind. If you ever think about these services, consider them, and we'll, we'll be glad to pass those out. Daily View Pools, minority-owned pool, commercial pool service firm, they do a wonderful job. Wisdom Senior Care, one of the best senior care providers in Mecklenburg County. Pink's, it's a commercial window wash company. Look, these have no, I have no interest in these businesses other than the fact that we all, as a community, want them to succeed. And, and I think what Chris is going to show you is just another example of the creativity that privately-held businesses do in Charlotte. So, Chris, I'll let you turn this over to you.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. Lift it up for the tall guys. Firstly, on behalf of myself and 704 Shop, Todd Collins of Red Hill Ventures and small businesses across the county, we wanna take a moment to thank you for your ongoing efforts to support small businesses across the region, your commitment to fostering growth, providing a, a great many resources, and creating opportunities for entrepreneurs has made a significant difference in our community. Small businesses are the backbone of our local economy, and your leadership has been instrumental in helping them thrive. And we truly appreciate your dedication to making Mecklenburg County a place where businesses can not only succeed, but grow. As a token of our appreciation, right, from Red Hill Ventures and 704 Shop, we wanted to present you with this signature MECC hat. I'll let, she's gonna model for us. It does have our logo on the side. Thank you for that, we'll get some photos. So, we wanted to present you with this signature MECC hat for your continued support of minority entrepreneurs and businesses to show you that your support is not unseen. We also extend a special welcome to Commissioner Mark Jorrell as he's beginning his role as Chair of the County Commissioners. And we look forward to a successful and impactful 2025 for the county and the region. Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys, we appreciate it. Looks beautiful up here, right?
Thank you.
Look, people come bearing gifts tonight, this is great. All right, we are gonna keep moving on with the agenda. We're moving to the, that portion of appointments. First up are appointments to the Women's Advisory Board. We do have two candidates. They were nominated during our last meeting. And if I'm correct, Madam Clerk, we are just taking a vote on both of these, correct? Okay, so the way we'll do this, we have, the candidates are Olga, Olga Stemmer and Michelle Tukpa. So, at this point, what I will ask, those that are voting for Ms. Olga Stemmer, you need five votes. Let's see by show of hands. One, two, three, four, five. So, there is only one slot. So, Ms. Olga Stemmer will be appointed to the Women's Advisory Board. Next up are appointments to Information Services and Technology Committee. Nominations are needed for, are needed on the Information Services and Technology Committee to fill three unexpired terms. The committee has recommended Sonia Williams and Stephen Whitaker, but they've also asked us to consider leaving a slot open because District Four has no representation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved improperly seconded. We do have an unreadiness, Commissioner Leek.
Do we hold slots for people? Many of us do not have people representing on these boards. And to do this tonight, is there a policy that speaks to this?
So, let me, let me address it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek, for that question. Let me address it this way, I can, I can ask the attorney about the policy. But one of the things that we've done, and we've tried to make sure that there is diversity on the boards, not just gender or racial or cultural ethnicity, but we've also tried to make sure that there was proper district representation, including the ETJ. And so, I appreciate the Information and Technology Board for lifting this up to realize that District Four was not represented. And so, to the extent that we're willing to leave a slot open for that, I think it's the right thing to do, and the way we should proceed.
And reason I ask so that the general public will understand the process?
Yes.
And we're not making a difference.
Thank you for that. All right, Madam Clerk.
If I could get clarification on that motion that was just made in seconded, and also that we know, how long would we keep this slot open if we don't get anybody from District Four?
Can't hear you.
Oh, they didn't have my mic on. I wanted clarification on the motion, and I also wanted to know how long we would keep this open if we didn't, we'll keep checking for District Four applicants, but if we don't get them, is there a time where we would?
So, let's, let's do this, let, let's take the first part first. And you wanna clarify the motion. I think you were just following the recommendation as outlined, but I'll let you clarify.
I move to appoint as recommended by the Advisory Committee.
The second part of that, Mr. Attorney, is that something we could take offline and make a decision, or does the time certain have to be part of the motion? make a decision, or does the time certain have to be part of the motion?
Well, you do want to set some time, otherwise it needs to come back to the board at some point in time, so you can give it, I don't know what would be appropriate, a time.
Sixty days.
Sixty days, so we can address, sixty days is reasonable. Do you want to add that to the motion?
Okay, so, yes, I move to appoint consistent with the letter of recommendation and table the third appointment for a period of sixty days to try to recruit from District Four.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously, Madam Clerk. Thank you for that clarification. All right, next up will be appointments to PTAC, that is the Public Transportation Advisory Committee. Nominations are needed on the Public Transportation Advisory Committee to fill two two-year terms expiring December 31, 2026. These are the B-O-C-C slots. Are there such nominations? Commissioner Altman?
Thank you, Chairman Jerrell. I would like to nominate, I first want to recognize that there are three people who have applied who are current CTAC members, and I would like, which is the former board that's now being absorbed into a new one. And all three of those individuals have served with distinction and honor. But there are only two slots to fill, and really trying to get the right mix of expertise and life experience to give us guidance that we need from the community at this transit moment. I therefore would like to nominate one incumbent, Ms. Dunlap Thompson, and a newcomer, Barry Green, principally because he comes to us from, is it Richmond?
Richmond.
Richmond, Richmond. And he has a bunch of really interesting experience around the bus system there and its implementation, and some really great things they've done there that I've had a chance to see, and so has the chairman. And so, I just think that he would bring a lot of fresh ideas and fresh perspectives that could be really helpful as we navigate this moment. So, those are my two nominations.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell?
I was going to nominate Barry Green Jr. also.
Okay. Commissioner Powell?
Same.
Okay. Good. All right, so we have, were you going to say something, Commissioner Dunlap?
Oh, no, I was just going to move that the nominations be closed on the two said names.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, that nominations be closed on the two said names. Is there any unreadiness? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, that carries unanimously, Madam Clerk. All right, now what we'll do is move to our public hearings. The first item up is an interlocal agreement with the City of Charlotte, Providence Square Re-Development. I need a motion to open the public hearing and receive this presentation.
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it unanimously, Madam Clerk. Chair will recognize Roger Johnson.
Thank you, Chairman Jerrell, Vice Chair Altman, members of the Commissioner. Madam Manager, my name is Roger Johnson. I work in the Office of Economic Development as the Economic Development Director. And before you tonight, we have a hearing about a tax increment grant on Providence Square redevelopment, which in effect is a public-private partnership. Pardon me while I get the appropriate clicker. Our presentation overview will include hearing from the general partners and some of the members of the project team about the development itself. It will be followed by a presentation from me that talks about the agreement, the components in the agreement, how a tax increment grant works, and the economic impact of the proposed development, and then at the conclusion, we'll ask the board to vote for a notice to approve on the, it substantially comports with what you hear tonight. With that being said, I want to make a couple of comments about our development partner. They came to the county first to talk about a public-private partnership. They wanted to hear what the county's priorities were and bake this into the particular development. The folks that we met with throughout this process were both interested in what the community wanted, as well as they were open to good faith negotiations. I hope what you find today is a result of a real partnership, and that you find it meets your particular request and demands that you have made upon staff through this year. I'd like to introduce to you Daniel Levine, Chair of Levine Properties, who will walk you through this particular project, and then we will again present later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger, and Chair Jerrell.
Good evening.
And I'd also like to thank Dr. Johnson, Bert Lynn, LaShonda Hart, Shah Rana, for all of their work with us on this opportunity. We appreciate the collaboration on this project. I'm Daniel Levine, Chairman of Levine Properties, and with me, my colleague Daniel Molino, President of Levine Properties, who is leading our efforts with me on the Providence Square redevelopment. In addition, Mike Wilson of Northwood Raven is also here. Unfortunately, Jeff Brown of Moore Van Allen is unable to be with us tonight. We appreciate the members of the Economic Development Committee who spent considerable time on this unique redevelopment, a redevelopment that will not only revitalize this area, but we believe will support many of the board's priorities. We are pleased to highlight the project's components, including the open space, parks, greenway connectivity, housing support, MWSBE goals, and other features. As indicated, we are grateful for the early meetings with Dr. Johnson and county staff leaders, and thanks to their strong advocacy during these meetings, we believe the project goes even farther in providing significant community benefits. While we also work with the city on the rezoning and project aspects, we started our discussions first with the county, and our initial public meeting started with the County Economic Development Committee. And by way of introduction, I'm a lifelong resident of Mecklenburg County. I've grown up in East Charlotte. My father, Al Levine, his brothers Leon and Sherman, all came from Rockingham, North Carolina, in the 1950s, each ultimately building a business right here in Mecklenburg County. I attended Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, graduated East MECC, and after going to Chapel Hill, I came back to Charlotte and started Levine Properties, now amazingly forty years ago. Can't hardly believe it. But we are a family-owned real estate company that keeps, tries to keep a low profile, as we focus on sustainable development and long-term ownership, which is what our intention is with the revitalization of Providence Square. We've collaborated with Mecklenburg County on major projects before, which is the design, development, and delivery of First Ward Park. That project also included UNC Charlotte's Center City Campus and substantial infrastructure in the neighborhood. As a company, we are now concentrating our efforts on mixed-use residential and commercial projects here in Charlotte. We've participated in business and philanthropic initiatives in the county and region that seek to uplift and support our growing and diverse community. We began investing in the Providence Square area forty years ago, and in the past few years, the deterioration of the more than sixty-year-old apartments forced us ultimately to tear them down. But in so doing, we worked hard with the then-existing residents in the successful relocation to new homes. This included hiring a relocation specialist on a full-time basis, numerous lease extensions and financial support to ensure that every tenant was positively relocated. Our experience has made us especially mindful of the importance of mixed-income communities, which is why we propose to include on our property 108 workforce units and affordable housing units. And we've coordinated rezoning work with Horizon and Enlivian across the street, and they plan another 75 affordable housing units. We're excited to partner with the county and the city on the revitalization of new open space, parks, greenway connectivity, minority opportunities and jobs, and other elements that support county priorities. Thank you again for working with us. Allow me now to introduce Mike Wilson of Northwood Raven, with whom we are working on a site across Providence Road.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission, I'll be very brief. We were invited to participate in this project about two years ago with Daniel Levine, and we got pretty excited about his vision for this area. I just want to lift up to you all the hard work that your staff has done, and also, in particular, Bert Lynn. We don't, we're a market rate developer, we're across the street, we're neighbors with the Horizon and Enlivian parcel, and we don't normally dedicate land to public parks, but Bert Lynn recommended that we do that. And so, I said, well, Bert, why would we do this right on Providence Road? That seems like a really busy intersection. So, I went over and met with Bert, and he convinced me the value of doing that. And I said, well, what if we put it right between the Horizon and Enlivian parcel and ours, so that we have this shared park that can be used by different communities? And then, we saw the value in that. So, I just really appreciate your attention to the project. I think it's a positive project, and we're excited to be here and try to improve this area of town for all the different people that live in it. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Molino, President of Levine Properties. It's been a pleasure, as Mike and Daniel said, to work with the staff over these last number of months on this redevelopment, which we do believe will support many of the board's priorities and goals. In addition to creating a renewed sense of place for the nearby residents, we believe our partnership with the county will help address the following priorities. Environmental stewardship by providing open space, new parks, McAlpine Creek greenway improvements, and multimodal connectivity, all leading to healthy lifestyles and social capital connections. Housing insecurity by including workforce and affordable housing in a mixed-income community, all as part of the overall broad revitalization. Racial disparity concerns through MWSBE commitments at a minimum of 25%, and other economic mobility initiatives being considered. Sustainability goals with features such as EV charging stations, a potential mobility hub, new underground utility infrastructure, all along with new tax revenues to support county priorities. As you may know, and as Daniel mentioned, the revitalization covers 110 acres along Providence Road at old Providence Road and Sardis Lane, much of which has consisted of 60-year-old deteriorated buildings. As Daniel referenced, the buildings had reached the end of their useful life, and we were forced to demolish them. We're proud of our efforts to ensure that the residents in the old apartments were successfully transitioned to other communities. This slide illustrates the project master development program, which will feature a grocery store, walkable restaurants, neighborhood goods and services, enhanced open spaces, and a new mixed-income housing, all supporting 10-minute neighborhood while also connecting more broadly to dozens of neighborhoods by way of new connections to the McAlpine Creek Greenway. As part of the proposed public-private partnership with the county, the development will include a range of community benefits, including 4.4 acres of parkland in two places adjacent to the McAlpine Creek Greenway and across the street, as Mike Wilson mentioned. A new multimodal bridge over the McAlpine Creek connecting to the greenway to be installed along with nearly a quarter mile of multi-use paths and greenway trails, connecting residents and surrounding areas to the greenway and the new mixed-use center. 100 workforce housing units at 80% of AMI, and eight affordable units at 60% of AMI. We'd like to note that our commitment to provide these units is without government subsidy or low-income housing tax credits, which represents a substantial developer contribution. I also note that our workforce housing units will accompany the plans by Horizon across the street to redevelop the Gladeale Community, where they plan, as Daniel mentioned, to add an additional 75 affordable units. This slide shows how the development is uniquely positioned, adjacent to the McAlpine Creek Greenway, providing connectivity to dozens of neighborhoods from the existing greenway in the Independence Boulevard area on the east, and over time to the west, as Parks and Rec completes planned future greenway extensions. This multimodal opportunity for connecting greenway trails to places, people in places, is exactly what the MECC playbook seeks to promote. The new significant greenway bridge and expanded multi-use paths are important features that will connect thousands of residents to a destination promoting healthy lifestyles, provide for non-vehicular connections to goods and services, and increased opportunity for social capital connections. As you can imagine, the creation of a new mixed-use development on a corridor like Providence Road is challenging from a transportation standpoint. We worked with CDOT and NC DOT over a period of nearly 12 months, studying over 22 intersections and developing an extensive list of road improvements to mitigate traffic impacts from the new development. In addition, several access management interventions and improvements are proposed along a two-mile stretch of Providence Road that will enhance traffic flow and safety. Our work with the county has resulted in a much more robust set of community benefits, and in our view, has enhanced the overall project. This slide reflects some of the progression in community benefits during our work. It shows on the far left, the base initial planned zoning development elements, and on the far right, where our discussions with the county took us. As you can see, our continued collaboration resulted in a combination of affordable and workforce housing units on the Levine site, and a $500,000 contribution to affordable housing initiatives. An increase in the parkland donation from 2.75 acres to 4.4 acres, which is now accompanied by a significant $1 million contribution to park activation. An evolution from a seed contribution to the greenway bridge to the commitment to install and fund the full construction and delivery of the bridge. And an increase in our MWSBE minimum goals from 15% to 25%. Thank you very much. I'll turn it back over to Roger.
Thank you for your continued collaboration in this particular project. On behalf of all the folks that you mentioned before, we're grateful that you have been open-minded to the county's considerations. I'm just going to leave this slide up here for a minute. As I speak to this, mostly to the public, I understand that the elected officials understand how this works, but this is not the normal business incentive grant that the public is used to hearing. So, I'm going to pause for a minute and explain how this works before I get into the details. What the public generally hears is a business incentive grant, and how that works is a company agrees to invest money in our community and create a number of jobs at certain wages, and we create a performance agreement with those particular businesses for the purposes of ensuring they make the investment and they create the jobs. And if they do that, we agree that when they pay their taxes, we'll contribute them out back to them in around 50% of usually three to five years. Today's incentive grant is different from that. This is a tax increment grant. It's tax financing, if you will. In this particular scenario, we are not separate from the business themselves. If you sign this agreement, we are a partner with this particular developer, in that some of the information that you heard before, we will eventually own those greenways, those bridges, those walkways. They will be public elements that the county controls, the parks themselves. All of those things wouldn't happen without this partnership. So, when a developer knocks on the door of the county, we, on behalf of the citizens and the elected officials, ask that they include elements that align with your board priorities. And when they do that, we consider recompense through these tax increment grants. And we started doing that in July of this particular, last year of '24. We started those discussions. In October, we came to the Economic Development Committee, who also heard about this particular project. They provided commentary. Staff and the development firm themselves heard those comments. Staff and the development firm themselves heard those comments directly. We went back to the table to further negotiate elements in this particular project, and came back to the Economic Development Committee and presented to them a final version for what you have seen tonight on December the 3rd. I will mention that at that particular time, staff was not ready to make a full recommendation to move forward. We had not completed all of our due diligence at that particular point, and we had not completed a REMI model. We agreed to do that in the gap between December and today. We have since completed that analysis, and I'm proud to say that it meets our financial modeling criteria, as well as results in a positive contribution to the county overall. A little bit about the development, so that we can talk about how this particular, the TIG works, excuse me, a little bit about the development. So the way it works is, this is all private money to fund this project. They're going to build everything, including all the public elements that you just heard our partner talk about. There's no county funds involved at this particular juncture. After they build it, and they pay their taxes, and meet all the thresholds that you just heard, we take that new tax revenue and give them a portion of that back. Again, it's not touching the general fund, it's not touching residential fund. This project is self-sustaining and funded by itself. There's a couple other things I think that are germane. One is that there is a capped dollar amount that the county will be responsible for. And in this one, it's a little over $12 million, almost $13 million, and I'll give you that exact number in a minute. The city also has a portion of that. But once we reach that cap, we do not provide any more incentive grants to that developer. Or, once the TIG reaches 15 years, it ceases whether we met that threshold or not. The point I'm trying to make here is, we're capped in our expenses, we will not pay more than what we talk about here today. And importantly, again, with all due respect to my colleagues, your tax dollars are not at risk here. It's the financial private sector tax dollars that are at risk. If they don't build it, they don't get the tax incentive grant, they don't get the revenues, your tax dollars are not at risk. They're taking the risk to complete this development. So what are they taking in terms of a risk? They're investing roughly $560 million in this project. Now, you saw the property that was in existence before. The assessed value of that was roughly $70 million. So when we talk about a tax increment grant, we're talking about the new revenue above and beyond the 70 million that was already there. So their incentive grant is based off $490 million of new tax revenues, where the 70 million is already a sunk cost. I'm not going to read this slide, you've already, you've already heard this presentation over a couple of times, you've heard the elements, but I want to point out a couple of things. There is parkland involved, there is the county, they are contributing that. They are also building the bridge, they're building the greenways, they're making all the connectivity. There can, there, there's a considerable expense for them to include affordable housing. You can see it's estimated to be $11.2 million. You heard about the traffic improvements and the sidewalks. There's also additional pedestrian ways. Back when I was growing up, you just call it a goat path or a cow path that exist out there. Well, we're going to turn that into a real path. We can't do it ourselves, it's owned by a private landowner. They're making a contribution directly to that landowner to make that a more permanent way to access the development. It's just been a real joy to add these public elements in there. But, but the reason I share this slide mostly has to do with what you see circled in red. So the state of North Carolina has opined that if you, if a county invests in infrastructure in these public-private partnerships, they have every right to provide an incentive for them to do so. How do we protect the, the, the public in that particular scenario? Those that you see in red are what we're saying is the maximum amount we reimburse them for in a tangible way. And what we do in this scenario, which is not, which we had not done before this particular meeting, is we make certain that all of those elements that they, they included in those red boxes are eligible for reimbursement. Just a hypothetical example, this is not necessarily true in this case, but for example, when a developer grades a piece of land, they usually grade it all at one time. Well, they're not eligible for reimbursement for all that grading, but a portion of that may be for sidewalks. In that scenario, the sidewalks may be eligible, but the rest of it may not be. That's one example of what we do. So we make sure that all of the expenses are eligible for reimbursement. And then secondly, we partner with the city of Charlotte, and their general services group, ask for information from the developer, which is the drawings, what are you going to construct, so we know what it kind of looks like and what it will feel like, as well as some construction estimates. Their general service department, which is an independent of economic development, goes and looks at the cost of these particular infrastructures to make sure that the developer is charging us a fair and reasonable weight rate to build a sidewalk, or a walking path, or a bridge. Once they take a look at the, the cost and make sure they're reasonable, and the taxpayers' money is being looked after, they also look at the timing. They want to know if they can build it in a reasonable amount of time, much like we could if we did this independently. The city has completed their analysis, the general services have done that work, they have said this is a fair deal for the city and the county. That work had not been done in December, it is now being completed for those on the Economic Development Committee, and that was sort of the due diligence piece that we wanted to complete before coming to the board. What is the breakdown of expenses, and how does it look between the city and the county? What, what we're proposing is a 15-year tax increment grant, where the developer will pay their taxes, and then we will rebate an amount, not rebate, that's illegal, we will provide a contribution in the amount of, that equals 45% of the actual taxes we receive. The city of Charlotte will do the same, and you can see what their contribution is. I will share with you that the city council has already approved this particular project, and it will go forward if and when you, as the elected officials, vote yes to this. And I will note that these percentages, although it looks like the county is providing a greater percentage, it is prorated in the fact that the, the revenues the county receives about twice as much as the city does, and so it is a fair contribution for each one of those particular entities. This is an oversimplification of how a tax increment grant works, and I say it's oversimplified because we're not including any tax rate changes, we're not including any increase in the property values, which may happen every four years, but it is illustrative enough to show you how a TIG works. And when I say you, I primarily mean the public, I know that you kind of understand that. But, but in around 2033, it's projected that this project will be built in completion, and the, and the increase in value will be about $490 million. At that particular point, the county will be receiving somewhere around $2.4 million annually. The developer will again pay their tax bill, and then we will keep 1.3 million of that dollars, and then we will provide a contribution back to the developer in the amount of 1.065 million, or roughly 1.1 million. And you can see that happens over whichever comes first, complete payment of the amounts I talked about before, or 15 years. When we wrote this projection, you'll note that line on, on year 12, 2044, you'll see a little hashtag on the screen. That means if this happens, as we've illustrated, we will have paid for the TIG in full in years 2013, 14, and 15, 24 through 27 would not be required payment by the county. Conversely, if the project doesn't get built, and we get to 2047 and have not reached the amount, we owe nothing more, the TIG is ended, and we move forward. Here's the second part of the due diligence, staff wanted to, to complete, and this will be new to the Economic Development Committee members as well. We do what's known as a REMI model, and it is a forecasting model, which includes future tax revenues, less expenses, less incentives. So I'll draw your attention to the top line. You see the green line at the top, for those of you that are watching at home, that is the tax revenues that the county expects to receive. Well, you'll see the red line, which is directly below it initially. Well, when new people move into our community, or, or additional services need, that could be schools, that could be parks, that could be other social services, we subtract that money out of the revenues. And then if you look at year 2033, the orange line, you'll note that we're paying incentives then. That's when we expect this to start, so we add those particular incentives into the equation. And when you add the orange line and the red line, you get what's sort of a navy-colored line. And the point I want to illustrate here, at no point does the general, does the, the project not pay for itself. The green line, our revenues always exceed our expenses, including the incentive. So when our partners spoke earlier about funding county priorities, this takes care of all of our services and grows the tax revenue in amount that you see before you. And at the end of this project, which we estimate to be 2048, you'll see that the county's going to net about $2.4 million annually to fund the board's priorities. This is the REMI model that we hadn't completed yet, the EDC. We have now completed it. It satisfies staff's fiscal review of the project, and we're excited about that. So in summary about this project, it aligns with the board's priorities in the following ways. Environmental stewardship, parkland donations, Greenway connections, multi-use path, parked activation support, and EV charging. We did have a meeting with one of the county commissioners, who also asked about, can we include native plants in this particular project? The, the, the process was too far along to include it on this slide, but our, our potential partners have said they would love to do that, they'd be willing, they're not experts in native plants, they asked if the county will help them with that endeavor, so that they would know what plants have the best chance of success, and they'll do the best that they can to include that. It includes mixed-income housing, workforce and affordable. And we talked about the new constructions, the updates in the amenities, it's going to be a quality of life, a place for those people in that community to, to, to have access to placemaking, even those that will be in Horizon will now have an improved quality of life. And then obviously, overcoming racial disparities. As you probably are aware, our, our standard goals are 23%, 15, and 8, but in this particular project, the partners committed to a 25%, 15% MBE, and a 10% MWSBE, which stands for Minority Women Small Business Enterprises. With that being said, we're asking for the board to adopt a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with the city of Charlotte for the reimbursement of public improvements to be constructed by LNR Development LLC in support of the new economic development opportunities by committing 45% of the incremental ad valorem taxes created by the project for a period of 15 years, and the amount not to exceed $12,130,000 plus interest. And we're asking you to authorize the county manager to execute a contract for the same with any necessary or helpful non-material changes. With that being said, that concludes our presentation. Will entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you, Roger.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you to the team. So before I entertain that motion, just give me one second, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell. Mr. Attorney, I want to make sure, do we have to take these two actions separate? The interlocal and the action for the county, the direction for the county manager, or can we do them in one?
You can, if, as long as you reference each one of them.
Each one? Okay. Thank you for that. Before we take the, before I entertain the motion, I do want to recognize the Chair of Economic Development to see if you wanted to add any additional thoughts around this deal, and, and what EDC came up with as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate the presentation, Mr. Levine, and the other partners here for your continued engagement with our committee, and I really feel proud of this product that, that has come as a result, especially if you put page 10 up on the screen. It really is a great progression, showing where the project started, and where it ended after continued engagement, and the consideration of county priorities. And so, we're, the, the Economic Development Committee unanimously, the, the previous Economic Development Committee, as it was before the new change in membership, we're unanimously recommending put forward this to the entire board for approval.
Thank you for that. So let me read, I'm going to recognize everybody, I'm going to read the motion, we'll get the motion on the floor, we'll have the discussion. Most of us have already seen the presentation, have already gone through this, and, and met with the team privately as well. So it will be one round max, but I, I think most of our questions should have already been answered, but if not, you know, we certainly want to put that out to the public. But let me read the motion. So the Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with the city of Charlotte for the reimbursement of public improvements to be constructed by a private developer in support of new economic development opportunities by committing 45% of the incremental ad valorem taxes created by the project for a period of 15 years, and the amount not to exceed $12,130,000, together with interest on such amount at a customary municipal rate. Second part is authorize the county manager to execute a contract for the same with any necessary or helpful non-material changes. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and properly seconded. We will have discussion now. I saw Commissioner Powell.
Thank you for the presentation, thank you for your comments. I'm just speaking personally, my perspective. The charts wouldn't mean very much to me if the priorities were ignored, and so this is important to me. And I just want to say, like, I'm, you know, thank you to everyone who worked on it, but thank you to this board for being serious about our, our priorities. And so, through Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell's leadership on environmental, or on, well, she's on environmental stewardship as well, but on economic development, and the committee members on economic development saying, like, you know, things come before us, and you look at it like, really? Like, it's bare minimum, it doesn't address all of our priorities, and this is different. This is completely different than anything that has come before me, because when you see this slide and the differences where our priorities have been considered and built in, it, it makes me feel like you are a good partner, like you really want to be a partner. And so there are a couple of people I want to thank, besides Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell and the Economic Development Committee members. Thank you to Bert Lynn, who is one of the best employees in Mecklenburg County, who cares about the long-term future of the county. And to Roger and Shaw for working so hard on this, and Dr. Johnson for, like, really representing the board priorities and not backing down off of that. It matters. If I had a voice, and so some, one of the things that bothers me is, like, when something comes to us fully baked, I feel like we should all have a voice, like there should still be something we could add. And so when you said they were, they're willing to make a commitment to native tree and plant landscaping, that's important to me, and it makes me know it wasn't fully baked, because we need to be able to add things like that. So I want to make sure, I'm looking at all three of you, that you really are going to make a good faith commitment to native trees and plants for landscaping, because every time I pass a landscaping truck, there are all kinds of invasive species on it that people plant, and it just causes problems throughout the county. So as long as that's part of what we're voting for, it makes me happy that, you know, that you're making that good faith commitment to do it, because it's going to make a difference, and people are going to view your companies better for caring about the environment. All of the things that you added make your community more desirable, so it's a win-win for everyone. I do wish we had more park activation money, that would, you might wish it too, but, but thank you for everything. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Leake.
Let me first say thank you so much for your presentation, which was long. I was trying to keep up with you. The committee has met with you, I have not, and I want to make sure that the general public is understanding what you're saying to us you're going to do with the money from the taxpayers. That's my job. So I'm not sure that we understand everything that has been said here tonight that will impact our community, and that's what I want to see, what will give me a plus for my people in the county of Mecklenburg, not tonight, hopefully before Friday. The committee, as I stated, has already seen and said yes, but I need to hear more than what you've said here tonight that's going to impact little Johnny when he becomes of age. Will he be able to get a job? Will he have an education? Will he be able to purchase a home, or lease a home, or have some place to live that's conducive and safe as an environment? I hope you're understanding what I'm saying, sir.
Commissioner Leake, I think I do understand, and if you, if you want me to respond a little bit, so the public has a better understanding, I'm happy to do that, or I can provide you information later, whatever your desires may be.
Well, you and I can get together, so we can draw up some questions, and I can get some questions from my people, and present them to you, so that they can be satisfied with making sure we're doing the right thing with the taxpayers' money in longevity, because everywhere you look, there's an Because everywhere you look, there's an apartment going up or a townhouse that my people can't afford because they're too expensive. So where are we talking and what are we saying? What would be the quality of life?
In this particular project, there are roughly 100 workforce housing units at 80% AMI. And I'll just give you a crude example, or LaShonda may want to come forward, but workforce housing is a little different than affordable housing. So in order to qualify for workforce housing, a single person in our community would have to earn about $67,000 a year. So if you're an individual earning $67,000 a year, you'll go through a process to qualify, but you will be able to move into one of these apartments, which will be built to the same standard as everyone else's. If it's got granite countertop, stainless steel in one, it'll have it in the same one for the workforce housing. And they can do that at what amounts to a reduced rate that the developer is saying they're going to charge them, which will equal 30%, roughly 30% of their income would be to that. And it would be, that would be basically the cap of what they could charge them. So I'm saying to you, we are making certain that there is a place in this new development for folks who may not be able to otherwise afford it by including workforce housing in there. And eight additional units at 60% AMI, which is a nice way to say, if you earn even less money, you get charged less rent or less of a rate to be able to live in these higher-quality buildings.
And let me say thank you, but again, we need to get together.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for your presentation. Thank you, young men.
Thank you, Commissioner Leek. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you so much, and thank you for being here tonight to give this presentation. I was on the Economic Development Committee when this came up, and I'm a full supporter of this. This is in my district. This is not a company that's coming in, building, and leaving. This is a company that is here, they have roots here, they live here, they live in the neighborhood. They're not going to just, it's not an investment company that doesn't care about the residents. That was made clear to us, and I appreciate that. This checks so many boxes of our priorities, which is so important to us. And if anyone's listening out there that we have actually not rubber stamped and not given the go-ahead, this is what we want. This is the kind of partnership we want, and you're listening to us, and it just makes a big difference, particularly when Park and Rec is on board, when staff is on board, and it's one, economic development was on board. So thank you, I support this completely.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for your presentation, Roger and the Providence Square folk. I have three, three points. I wrote them down so they don't forget them. One is partnership. You indicated this was a partnership, and that's a two-way street. This presentation has indicated what they're willing to do on a number of fronts, in terms of MWSBE, in terms of economic development, upward mobility, et cetera. What I want us to be ready for on the public side is to be able to support the private side when those economic development opportunities make themselves available, that we have people that can get into those jobs. That's, that's, that's a two-way street, and I appreciate the private side saying the door is open, now we have to provide the workforce and the labor to satisfy a lot of our, our priorities. The second piece is, and we met with the Health and Human Services Committee that I chaired this afternoon and got an overview of the county's framework for addressing something called social determinants of health. And everything that you've articulated touches each domain of the social determinants of health that creates a healthy family and healthy opportunities for upward mobility. The economic piece, in terms of having a stable place to live, education in terms of proximity to good schools, health in terms of being able to get outside, walk the sidewalks, walk the trails, et cetera. And just the relationships. And what I mean by that more specifically, as you build up, the retail, the grocery, et cetera, you don't have any direct control over that, but you do have indirect input. And so rather than just having a bagger as a store clerk, you can be in training to be a grocery store manager, to be able to move around in other, other areas. In terms of retail, not just being a clerk, but learn retail business to maybe one day manage a retail shop itself. You talk about daycare, which is a five-star daycare that prepares youngsters to be ready for school and a good place for parents to place their children while, while they're working. So all of the things that have been articulated in here are all the points that we talk about philosophically on this thing called social determinants of health. But you indicated one clear thing up front. We are in partnership, so we have to partner with you actively in order to take advantage of the opportunities. I, like you, Mr. Levine, as a native Charlatian, we've, we've missed a number of opportunities. I don't want this opportunity to be another miss. We have a great opportunity to do something that we haven't done in a long time, and that's developing a healthy community with hitting on all of the cylinders in terms of social determinants of health. So I appreciate these efforts completely. So sorry, Mr. Chairman, for going over my three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dunlop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I think if anybody, Roger, thank you guys for the presentation. Thank you for leaving up the slide. I, I, I hope maybe they can zoom in to that so people can really see what a part of this partnership. You'll see where the first round came in and what was offered, and then what we ultimately agreed upon. And I think there are just so many things in this project that lend itself to the priorities that we've been talking about for the last number of years. The fact that in this area of town, there'll be housing available for workforce housing available in this area of town at 80% AMI, and in fact, they'll even do some units at 60% area median income. So that's important for people who are looking for housing, who may not have been able to afford it in other areas of town would be able to afford it in this part of town. The amount of money that's being contributed to our parks, the amount of money that being contributed to our greenways, the fact that they're going to construct the Greenway Bridge, the number of, of, well, the increase in the number of MWVE participation from 15% to 25% when we're typically around the, the number of 12%, 13%. However, and I'm proud of that because we see increasing numbers in minority participation in a lot of these projects. So those were some of the things that I think sold not just me, but this board entirely, because what they've demonstrated is that they embrace the things that we're embracing in terms of our board priority. And then lastly, because Mr. Levine is from Charlotte.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you as the newest tadpole in the pond. You took the opportunity to very definitely explain to me the project. I had a lot of questions, but you answered all of them, and the presentation was exactly the same, and you allowed me to even add some things that I would like to see in the future with public, public-private partnerships. It is excellent, as each of my colleagues has said, and I, I just want to touch with the community that I know that, that income that they stated is really not the income that most people, but, but this is a good thing. Trust me, I understand, I have the empathy that $67,000 income is not the average of a lot of folks in workforce housing, right? But it is a start. That is just one price point, that's the average, that's just one. They're making great strides, so please keep that in mind. Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you all for your comments. Vice Chair Altman does not.
No, I don't need to, I'm really, could not add to what my colleagues have said. I really appreciate everything that you brought forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that. There are a few things that I want to add. First, Roger, we're all up here trying to figure out who teed up the native plants. We just can't figure it out.
We don't have a clue.
We, we just don't have a clue, but we'll figure it out later. So a couple of things. I, I think it's important for the public to understand, when we're talking about board priorities, I, I really want everybody to understand that we're talking about community priorities. We represent the community, we represent you. So these are, are community priorities that we are making sure that when people come to us and want to have a level of partnership with us, that is reflective of what we hear in the community. One of the things, and why people are so excited, is because there are a lot of people that want to partner with the county. And we've seen some so-so attempts at it, we've seen some terrible attempts at it, all documented on tape. But very rarely, thank you, Susan Harden, Professor Harden, but very rarely have we seen one that checks a significant, if not all the boxes, that would provide significant benefits to the community. And that, that's what you're hearing here. So when you hear the thank yous, it, it is because we really believe that the benefits that the community will receive and achieve are going to be significant. We will be able to feel those benefits when we talk about housing, when we talk about minority participation, when we talk about open space, our native plants. All of those elements are so important, our parks. Also, what was different about this that typically doesn't happen, the Providence Square team leaned into the county first so that we were able to provide our stamp, our lens, our perspective around this prior to, and I'm grateful to our city colleagues and, and their collaboration, their collaborative efforts. We are all grateful to them. But typically, we're on the tail end. This time, we were on the front end. And frankly, you can see the result of us being on the front end in this outcome. And I'm very proud of that, and I am thankful for that, because the lens of the county should not be subservient or second to any other lens, not only in this county but across the state. With that being said, we did have a motion, I did have a second. All those in favor, let's see by show of hands. All those opposed? That is eight to one, Madam Chair.
So.
Commissioner Dunlop.
Point of clarification, and I may have missed it. Now, did we open the hearing and did we vote, and did we close the hearing before we voted?
No, this was, the motion is to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution. That's the first part, and the second part is to authorize the county manager to execute the contract. So that's all that, so that's all in the motion. All right, thank you for that. So it's eight to one, Madam, Madam Clerk. So the motion carries. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you, Roger. All right, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's a TEFRA hearing, it's TELRA Institute project. The motion is needed to open the TEFRA public hearing to receive comments on the proposed financing by the TELRA Institute. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any unreadiness? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Are there any speakers? Any speakers for this item? No, sorry. No? Okay. So motion is needed to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution entitled Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Mecklenburg County, North Carolina, approving the issuance of educational facilities revenue bonds by the Public Finance Authority in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million for the purposes stated.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. All right, so we are finally getting to the, we are finally at the point that you all are here for. Thank you for your patience in allowing us to navigate this agenda. At this time, what I'm going to do is turn the gavel over to our vice chair to navigate this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, as we begin our budget public hearing, I'll read some guidelines for all of our speakers. The time limit for speaking is three minutes unless there are four or more speakers who wish to speak concerning the same matter, in which case all persons wishing to speak on the same matter will be considered a group and given a total of 10 minutes in which to speak. The group, the four or more speakers, can divide the 10 minutes amongst themselves as you so choose. The board reserves the right to alter these rules on a case-by-case basis as necessary for the efficient and effective conduct of business. Members of the board will not engage in dialogue with public speakers. Comments will be received and follow up, followed up upon as applicable by county staff and/or members of the board. Handouts or tokens should be given to the clerk for distribution to board members at the conclusion of the meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to open the budget public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Having received a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Our first group will be Ms. Mueller. I'll just read last names to make it more efficient. Mueller, Dixon, Dixon, and Seymour, all in a group. And y'all can come on down to my right. And while they're making their way down, ooh, I'm excited, we have.
This is helping with the traffic control.
Okay, good. We'll go ahead, though, and send the second group to the other speakers' well, so they'll be ready to go. Brookhouse, Brown, Bates, and Govan Hunt.
No, I think they're all set.
They're in one group?
No, they are all in one group.
Are they all in one group?
No, they're individuals.
They're individuals. Got you.
Brookhouse is.
Got you, got you. Okay, so Ms. Brookhouse, you'll be second. But at this time, I'm really excited, wow, about our first group. And if you don't mind, tell us your ages before you kick it off, before we start their time.
I'm 10.
I'm 10.
All right.
I'm 8.
I'm 9.
Wow, okay, well, I'm just going to say right now, you're definitely the highlight of the evening. So thank you for turning out, and we will now start your time. The floor is yours.
My name is Amara Mueller. I'm in the fourth, I'm a fourth grade student at Huntington Farms Elementary School. I'm here tonight to ask you to increase the budget for our parks. Parks are very important for people in urban areas. Parks are calming, are calming. You can listen to birds sing and feel the wind on your face. Parks are relaxing. I love going to playgrounds on the greenway. Every Friday after school, I meet up with some friends from school at a playground on Sugar Creek Greenway. We play soccer, make up games, climb down to the creek, which my mom may or may not like. We go into the woods, and this is one of my favorite activities of the week. Our nature preserves are important to people of all ages. I go to camp at the McDowell Nature Preserve, and my dad and grandfather used to take me fishing at Reedy Creek Park. Kids and adults can learn about nature and protecting our environment at nature preserves. Greenways are also really important. I lift a scooter, ride my bike, walk my dog with my mom on greenways around Charlotte. My, my girls on the Rym Team trained on a greenway near our school, and we would pass people of all ages enjoying a nice evening run. Parks, greenways, and nature preserves matter because their trees help filter out our air. They provide shade, and they are home to birds and small animals. They provide joy and beauty, and they make our lives happier. Please consider increasing the budget. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Eleanor, and I'm a student in fourth grade at Huntington Farms Elementary. Parks and Rec are important to me because they let me get close to nature. Like when my classmates and I go to Huntington Farms Park on Fridays, which is one of the only times I get to see my classmates outside of school. We like to play in the field and on the pickleball court. I go to fun swimming camps at Marion Deal and play games at Reedy Creek Summer Camp. I like to go to the pond at Parker Park, play in the creek at Sedgwood Park, go do cashing at McDowell Nature Preserve, and I like the kinetic sand exhibit at Stevens Creek. These places make Charlotte more fun, so please consider this while deciding how much funding they get.
My name is Desmond Dixon. I'm in, I am in second grade at Huntington Farms Elementary. I'm talking today because I like recreation and nature centers, parks, playgrounds, and greenways. I think we should be supporting. I think we should be supporting them because A, recreation centers like Marion Deal are really fun, B, greenways are places where you can exercise when you are stressed, and C, nature is life. I played sports at Arbor Glen Rock Center and went to summer camps at Marion Deal Rock Center. My favorite summer camp last year was the outdoor Olympics at Reedy Creek Nature Center. I like playing soccer with my friends at the field at Huntingtown Park on Fridays after school. I like to ride my scooter on Little Sugar Creek Greenway. These places need more to do more. Imagine what without life or anything, what would it be like? How would you feel if you were the only thing? Please give them fun, staying, thanks for letting me speak.
Hello, my name is Quentin Seymour, and I want to support funding for the rec centers. I play basketball and use multiple rec centers to play, including Marion Deal, Eastway Rec, Barrowick, and Ray Splash Plaza. We need to keep these rec centers nice and add more rec centers as the courts are used for many sports now that sometimes overlap, and then I can't play. I wake my mom and dad up to take me to courts so I can play and have fun. Please keep the rec centers open so kids like me can continue to play. Thank you.
Let's give them a round of applause. It took a lot of courage. It's Brookhouse.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Peggy Brookhouse, and I serve on Charlotte Mecklenburg Library's Board of Trustees. I've been asked to let you know that our CEO, M.T., who's usually in attendance, is away at a library conference and sends his regrets. So having experienced the life-changing impact libraries can have on individuals and on the community as a whole, I'm here to discuss the importance of providing funding support to Charlotte Mecklenburg Library for collections, staffing, and other library needs. The library has always been a place a person can go to find something to read for fun, to read, to learn, or both. We have a great collection. It offers everything from New York Times bestsellers like Fourth Wind to Cher's memoir, to Ina Garten's latest cookbook, to DIY guides like my personal favorite, Black and Deckard's Complete Guide to Wiring, like Diary of a Wimpy Kid, and also The Wall Street Journal, New York Times. The library offers these and much, much more in print and digital formats. Creating and maintaining a collection that is fresh, current, diverse, and vast is important to our growing Mecklenburg County community and library system. As you know, more and more books are being published on a variety of topics and in various formats, including large print for seniors and books on disc for those who are visually impaired. Demand by the public for the library's collection continues to rise with over 8,600,000 checkouts last fiscal year. This fiscal year, checkouts are trending at a 12% increase over that number. Which is good, it's great. More people are accessing the library and enjoying the library and all the benefits it brings to the community. But we struggle to keep up with the demand due to budget limitations. You have always supported helping, supported helping us provide a collection that is interesting, useful, and reflects the varied interests and needs of the community. The library thanks you for your support with one-time funds over the last several years, both in non-recurring budget increases as well as ARPA dollars to support collections. But without sustained funding, we continue to face a significant decline in the budget each year. And as you can imagine, with ARPA dollars ending this year, the issue has compounded. Charlotte Mecklenburg Library is working to improve lives and build a stronger community. We ask that you help us continue to do this by providing a corresponding sustained investment in books and materials. Thank you for this time tonight, and thank you for your support and consideration of Charlotte Mecklenburg Library's work in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Brookhouse, and I would like to recognize the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the library, Mr. Thomas, thank you so much for being here. All right, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you about the need to provide Charlotte Mecklenburg Library with funding support for staffing, collections, and other library needs. The library's mission is to improve lives and build a stronger community that can only be done with talented staff and more of them. I recently had the opportunity to work along with the library team members to plan lunch and learn sessions that address library programming. It was amazing and breathtaking. I was so impressed with how the staff connects with the community in so many ways. And before the first program attendee ever walks through the door, they have so many tasks to complete to make the program happen, along with their other day-to-day tasks. From planning a storytime for our youngest guests, allowing our teenagers to plan diverse programs through the Volanteam Program, welcoming our newest national and international residents to Charlotte, and ensuring that our incarcerated residents can transition smoothly into their families and future careers are just a few of the programs that our library team members spend countless hours planning and implementing on a daily basis. This shines light on just how much staff does. It also made me realize the great need to further invest in our valuable resource by increasing the number of staff in our branches. Did you know, with your support, the library hosted more than 20,000 programs for adults and children last fiscal year? During that time, more than 475,000 individuals attended programs at the library. Programs like Storytime, Tech Tutoring, Reading Buddies, and more take a great deal of staff time. In fact, our Storytimes are loved by so many that they are often full. Of those hundreds of thousands of people who attended our programs last fiscal year, more than half of those attendees were for children's programs. Growth in Mecklenburg County over the last 15 years has resulted in an increase in customers and demand for library services. We are filled with anticipation for the new Main Library, a once-in-a-generation project. The new facility will help us meet the community's increased demand for library services, programs, and collections. We must ensure this iconic facility has the staffing to fully activate and maximize its potential. Please help us continue to be of value to the community by providing the funding support to hire more staff. Without it, our community will feel the negative impacts of reducing programming, reduced services, and reduced resources. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And Mr. Bates, before you begin, if I can go ahead and call down Jovan Hunt, and then Bowers, Jackson, Myrie, and Singh to this side. Go ahead, I'm sorry, please.
All right. I speak tonight in support of increased funding for library staffing. I moved to Charlotte to work for the public library. I started as a librarian in the Carolina Room, the local history and genealogy collection. I later led the Carolina Room team and helped with the daily management of the Main Library. And at special events, I served and managed the Scalybark Branch Library on South Boulevard and the Independence Regional Library near East Mecklenburg High School. I was with the library for 24 years. Everyone I worked with taught me something. Some library staff positions require advanced degrees, particularly librarians. All successful library staff know to meet community members where they are in life and help provide them information and quality library services. Library staff wear a lot of hats simultaneously. Their work requires specialized skills to provide programs and instruction and a knack for being friendly and informed. In a single day, staff might answer lots of questions about the library, where to find information. They might teach library patrons computer and technology skills and present a public program, tidy up, and handle a minor emergency two or two, like a stuck study room door, or perhaps a printer that doesn't print. Behind-the-scenes work is crucial, and it takes many staff hours to prepare programs and select and manage materials. Today, I am a library patron and customer. My regular library is the South Boulevard branch. Thanks to good funding and talented library staff, it is a bright and welcoming place full of books and computers, computer art, quiet readers, and sometimes there might be a program happening too. The library is for everyone, and staff try to be where the people are around our county. I go to South Boulevard to pick up my books I've requested online. Recently, I learned about a book club meeting for mystery meters led by staff that meets at my branch monthly, and I plan to attend. Other times, I might use the library remotely to access online resources for personal and professional research or just to read magazines. I particularly value that the library provides access to computers and the internet for patrons of all ages. We have a digital gap in our community that the library helps address. Communities benefit from having libraries, like ours, because they provide the quality of life and help people help themselves. The library is a place where people of many perspectives and backgrounds can encounter each other, an increasingly rare occurrence today. Library staff help make that possible. Thank you.
Dr. Govan Hunt.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for your time and your attention. I represent the Black Child Development Institute Carolinas, an organization that has been leading in family and community engagement, literacy, early childhood education, health and wellness, and policy for over 20 years. We have made it a point to align our culturally relevant and responsive approaches to the needs of our community. We are an organization that believes in the oft-quoted maxim that parents are their children's first and most important teachers and lifelong advocates. We appreciate the definition of family engagement as a systemic and sustained commitment that occurs across time spans, many settings, and requires shared responsibility from all parties. So tonight, I stand here to encourage you to consider parent choice for early care and education. Consider this through invested, investment. Investing in early care and education programs, including family childcare homes, is not just a moral imperative, it is an economic and social necessity. These programs are the cornerstone of our communities, directly supporting working families, preparing our youngest learners for future success, and fostering the whole health and well-being of children. Family childcare homes in particular represent one of the most underutilized yet vital resources in our efforts to improve literacy rates, to nurture well-rounded children, and build strong, resilient communities. They provide high-quality personalized care in trusted neighborhood settings, creating a ripple effect of stability and growth for family and local economies alike. When local governments prioritize adequately fund and adequately fund these programs, they empower families to thrive, strengthening workforce participation, and address systemic inequities that have long hindered community progress. Supporting these early care and education programs is more than just an investment. It's a commitment to the future prosperity and vibrance of our county. This is a call to action, this is our call to action. Let us champion these programs as the essential building blocks. They are ensuring that every child and every family and community has the foundation to succeed. Take time to visit these programs that produce scholars and strong family advocates, such as Castle's Daycare Academy, Quality Child Care Center, the Charlotte Bilingual Preschool, Lone Tree Academy, just to name a few. Spend time with foundations such as the Family Childcare Center, Richmond Foundation, to better understand the impact of these programs in our community. These providers are oftentimes left out of the conversation about how we prepare our children to enter the school system with strong starts that are entered the school system not intimidated by the print or the letters on the wall, and we encourage you to take time to visit these programs and consider funding them. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and we appreciate your service.
Thank you, ma'am, and I apologize, I may have misstated your name. Could you share?
I am Davanya Govan Hunt.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Then I was correct.
Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you, thank you. All right, now I believe we have a group. So, sorry? So, yeah, I thought we next had a group of four. Okay, then you'll have three minutes, sir.
All right. Esteemed members of the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners, it is with deep gratitude that I stand before you today. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to our youth and the incredible work you do to nurture their potential. My name is Ricky Singh, a passionate advocate for youth development, the executive director of My Brothers Keeper Charlotte Mecklenburg. When you boil me down, I'm a 19-year-old educator, father to four black boys, and a servant to Charlotte youth. My Brothers Keeper is a nonprofit organization that is focused on uplifting and empowering Charlotte youth through innovation, with a closer focus on boys and young men of color, ages 12 to 24. I'm here today just to share about some of the programs that we have existing in the county to make you aware of it as you guys are moving forward towards planning. The first is Becoming Kings, in partnership with Johnson C. Smith University, an initiative that provides safe and supportive spaces for male students of color to connect, grow, and expand their network, hopefully where their talents stay in Mecklenburg County before they graduate. Ibelong, a similar program that empowers male students of color to achieve success through tailored mentorship. Our work with Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools, we're helping to tackle the issue of chronic absenteeism head-on by identifying and addressing its root causes through personalized support and home visits, phone calls, and community partnerships. Lastly, the Northeastern University Speech and Language Center. We're working in collaboration with Northeastern University to increase access to high-quality speech-language services for underserved communities in Charlotte. This center, even as of today, has opened and is providing free speech-language therapy services in person and virtually for children as young as 11 weeks old to the elderly. There are just a few examples of the many ways My Brothers Keeper is helping to make a difference in the lives of young people across our city and county. We're incredibly grateful for Mecklenburg County's support, which has been instrumental in our success. We'll be back before you throughout 2025, not only to share updates on our progress, but to bring the voices of our youth to the forefront. We had some that were gonna be here today but got stuck in the snow as they were figuring out their schedule. Young people from all corners of our city and county were hope to be here to share their stories, their successes, their dreams for the future. They are the heart of our work. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, Megan Fensel, and then Alex Davis, Ruth Ann Grissom, and Nancy Nicholson.
Good evening, Commissioners. On behalf of Sustained Charlotte, we urge you to prioritize and fully fund our county's park and greenway system and this year's operating budget and rolling CIP. When I say parks and greenways, I mean everything. Parks, greenways, rec centers, nature preserves, everything that Mecklenburg County Park and Recreation covers. Investing in our parks is not just about creating beautiful places to enjoy, it's also about building a healthier, more equitable, and more prosperous community for all county residents and visitors. It's about access to quality green spaces and recreational facilities, which should not be a luxury. We must ensure that all residents, regardless of income or location, have equitable access to parks. It's about community connectivity. As greenway segments become connected to each other and to on-road facilities for walking and biking safely, they have the power to connect people and communities. We're increasingly seeing more residents who are using the greenways to commute to work, not having to use a car. We're seeing children walking and biking to school. On a personal note, I'm in District 2, and I'm really excited that eventually we will have a Sugar Creek Greenway in the west part of Charlotte, not just a little Sugar Creek Greenway, which has been spectacularly successful going through the heart of Mecklenburg County and really connecting people. It's about health benefits. Parks and greenways offer vital opportunities for physical activity, reducing the incidence and severity of diseases. It's about environmental benefits. Investing in parks and greenways supports the county's environmental stewardship priorities. Trees absorb carbon dioxide, improve air quality, and help regulate temperatures, while also allowing residents to really fall in love with and better steward the natural environment by allowing them to be in close proximity to the county's more than 3,000 miles of creeks. Parks and greenways are also economic drivers. They attract tourists, they boost property values and support local businesses, and they also create jobs in construction, maintenance, and recreation. they also create jobs in construction, maintenance, and recreation. So investing in park and rec is a fantastic investment for our entire community, and I would urge you to fully fund our park and greenway system for a healthy, connected future for Mecklenburg County. It's an investment we can't afford to miss. Thank you for all that you do.
So much. And if, speakers, actually, will you announce your name when you come to the podium, just so I can make sure we're making it clear for the clerk?
And it's Gary Young in Loua Davis. I think you called Davis up. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gary Young, and I have the honor of standing before you today as a proud resident of the greatest district in Mecklenburg County, where it's often echoed by none other than Commissioner Vilma Leek, District 2. I am here on behalf of the HBCU Battle of the Bands, an event that is more than just music and performance, it is a celebration of culture, education, and economic growth for Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. First and foremost, they want to extend a sincere show of gratitude to this county, the Sheriff's Department, CRVA, and all other supporters of HBCUs in attendance. Your recognition of the significance and impact of this event speaks volumes, and they deeply appreciate your commitment. In 2024, the HBCU Battle of the Bands delivered measurable success to our community. They brought in eight HBCUs from five different states, they occupied over 2,000 hotel rooms generating over $500,000 in lodging revenue, they contributed $1.9 million back into the Charlotte economy, they created over 100 jobs while supporting more than 50 local businesses, they partnered with 20 local Charlotte youth groups, they included six Charlotte Mecklenburg High Schools and Performances, they donated 3,000 tickets to CMS students, giving them firsthand exposure to HBCU culture, they hosted a college fair when 1,000 CMS students had their application fees waived to attend HBCUs, and they proudly awarded $10,000 in scholarships to CMS high school seniors heading to HBCUs. These numbers reflect a significant impact, not just on our students but on the local economy, small businesses, and cultural enrichment of our community. Looking ahead, there is a bold five-year plan designed to make the Battle of the Bands the largest HBCU event in the United States. With increased support, that Battle of the Bands can elevate tourism, drive economic impact, and continue to inspire the next generation of HBCU students right here in Mecklenburg County. That is why they are asking for a greater financial allocation to help achieve this goal. Your investment in this event is an investment in education, economic growth, and cultural empowerment. We look forward to partnering with you to make Mecklenburg County the home of something truly extraordinary. Thank you.
Good evening to each of you. I'm Nancy Nicholson, along with Ruth Ann Grissom, whose remarks will follow mine. Ruth Ann joins me in wanting to congratulate Commissioners Gerald and Altman on your new leadership roles, and welcoming our new at-large member Commissioner Townsend Ingram. And we give a hearty welcome to our new Park and Recreation Director, Nick Walker, who I don't know where he is, but I'm assuming he's probably here. We look forward to working with all of you in the new year. Some of you are aware, let me mention that Ruth Ann and our co-leaders of a 10-year effort in Latta Park, installing native plants, removing invasives, improving erosion, educating our neighbors and visitors about the importance of nature, and specifically native plants. Some of you are aware that I'm the former Director of Charlotte Shelter for Abattered Women, where I worked closely with many of the services funded by Mecklenburg County, such as the Health Department, Police, Sheriff's Offices, the Courts, Department of Social Services. A now-adult child went through our public school systems K through 12. The public library is one of my very favorite places in the world, and I utilize our parks, greenways, and preserves very regularly, and I enjoy my own neighborhood park, Latta Park, almost every day. And I share this to tell you that I deeply appreciate what you fund in a very personal way, and I know what a hard job that you have to distribute our limited funds to so many worthy causes. But tonight, I'm here to advocate for green spaces, like we've had several others today. I love the kids especially. The parks, the greenways, the preserves, that benefit all of our citizens with healthy air, water, psychological and emotional benefits. In past years, I have shared with you the research that supports what we intuitively know: green spaces reduce violence, they lower blood pressure, they help manage ADHD, they calm people's nerves, and so much more. We need more trees to cool our increasingly hot city and to clean our air. We need more playing fields for children and activity centers for adults, and our birds and wildlife are more and more challenged by the concrete in what seems to be out-of-control development in our city. Our Latta Park project, with a mailing list of over 200 supporters and 30 active volunteers, is doing what we can do to assist park and rec. I ask you to increase funding for this department so that more land can be acquired, and our parks can be better maintained throughout Mecklenburg County. We have a prosperous city, it's filled with cranes and bulldozers and road construction, and we must balance this with green oases for every citizen.
Nicholson, thank you so much. Thank you so much. And Ms. Grissom, before you begin, let's call down Helen Hope Kimbrough, Righteous Kit, Diana Harris, and Jerry Kingsley to the side. Thank you, ma'am, please proceed.
Good evening. As Nancy said, it's now been 10 years since she and I took a very purposeful walk through Latta Park to talk about why it was looking so worn and neglected. We had terrible problems with erosion, invasive plants, and failing infrastructure. Retaining walls were rotting, and picnic tables were crumbling. We soon started a volunteer group to help address some of those problems, and we also started asking Park and Rec to do the work beyond the scope of our volunteers. We quickly learned that Park and Rec had suffered dramatic budget cuts in 2010 in the wake of the recession. Our economy had recovered by 2015, but funding for Park and Rec had not recovered. Inadequate staffing and deferred maintenance had taken a toll on parks all across the county. In addition to doing some hard, physical labor in our own neighborhood park, Nancy and I knew we would also need to advocate for parks countywide. We wanted our work in Latta to become a model for other parks, but we did not want to create a system of haves and have-nots. We wanted every park in the county to have the resources it needed. At the time, our park system ranked at the very bottom of the Trust for Public Land's Park Score Index. We were 97th out of 100 communities on that list. In recent years, we briefly improved to 81st, thanks to your increased financial support. Thank you. But unfortunately, we've now slipped back to number 87 on that list. We cannot become complacent with current funding levels because we are not keeping up. Our funding is $110 per capita. The national average is 124. Minneapolis spends $318 per person on their parks. Communities that are far less affluent than ours fund their parks at higher levels than we do. Cincinnati spends $190, Memphis spends 163. Only 7% of the land in Mecklenburg County is used for parks. The national average is 15%. We need to double our public green space. We've made a lot of progress in Latta Park over the past 10 years with the help of our volunteers and the Park and Rec staff, but we still have a long way to go, and we frankly see no end in sight. We need more funding system-wide so that all of our parks are able to serve the increasing demands on our precious and dwindling green space. And y'all get home safe tonight.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Helen Hope Kimbrough, and I am the Board Chair of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Library Foundation. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the funding support on behalf of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Library for fiscal year 2026. In reference to our libraries, I have had the honor of visiting nearly every library branch across the county, whether bringing my laptop to work, or reading during storytime, or attending events or volunteering. What stands out is how distinct and unique each library is, embracing the special qualities and attributes of their respective communities. Additionally, the library staff contributes mightily to the environment of each branch, building and creating thoughtful and welcoming spaces to meet the needs and interests of its audience and the library community. Most know the library as a place to check out books or to read books, and thankfully, the library continues to work to build its collection of books and materials that the community wants. However, the library is so much more. The library is also a place where human and social services reside as a resource, which means libraries must be equipped to assist and support the community at a greater level as it pertains to access to information, supportive learning and literacy needs, access to technology and digital literacy, and career and workforce development. The library must continue to be forward-thinking in its approach to helping improve the quality of life of residents in our community. Thus, it's awesome to have partners such as Novant Health offering wellness hubs at a few branches, and PNC Bank supporting early literacy efforts for young children. Finally, the library is meeting people where they are with MOLI, the Mobile Library, and with Mila, the Mobile Internet Lab. In regards to MOLI, I've witnessed firsthand how beneficial it is to have this mobile unit as an access point to what's needed, specifically for moms who want books for their kids to read, as well as wanting books for themselves to improve, learn, and grow in their respective interest. I also met a young woman and mom who used the library's computer resources to obtain a job, and learned that she was from my hometown of Athens, Georgia. She was energized by her next steps for herself and her family, and this was indeed a special moment, not only for her but for me. The library does so much for our community, and I ask that you strongly consider fiscal funding for 2026. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Righteous Delane Kit. Tonight, I am here to talk to you about Generation Nation. I serve as Vice Chair of Generation Nation on the Board of Directors. Generation Nation is the only nonprofit, not only in Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, but throughout the state of North Carolina, that is dedicated to building civic literacy and leadership among K through 12 students in our community. We do this through a variety of programs that take place throughout the year. One of our programs, which you're all familiar with, is the Charlotte Mecklenburg Youth Council. Since 2013, Generation Nation has partnered with Mecklenburg County, the City of Charlotte, and Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools to provide the community's public officials, civic leaders, and students an outstanding youth council, which has received state and national recognition. Through the Youth Council, high school students from every high school meet regularly to advise officials, problem-solve current issues, build social capitals, and eventually, shoo, become leaders. The Youth Council also helps young people to build personal skills and network, and networks that will help them access and succeed in college, through workplaces and civic life. I can tell you this all through my personal experience, leaving the script. I have been a part of Generation Nation for eight years. 10 years ago, I did not know what the county was. I didn't know what the city government did. Through Mecklenburg and through Generation Nation, I was able to understand the impact that you all have for our city, for our county, and to ensure that we all have a better place to live. So I genuinely appreciate you all for what you have done, and for the many of you that I've interacted with over the last eight years. Generation Nation, for me, it gave me an opportunity to thrive in a way that I don't know I would have had if Generation Nation wasn't there. I ended up getting a full ride, college scholarship to Chapel Hill, because of the experiences that Generation Nation provided for me. So it is an honor to stand in front of you guys and to blatantly say, though you guys have partnered with us since 2013, the funding has not increased since then. It's sat at around $13,000. And with the responsibility of Vice Chair, I've taken it on as my onus to ensure that this organization, which has done so much for me, is funded and is properly done so. I believe, according to our notes, that the city funds us at about $50,000 annually. I'm just asking you guys to continue to put all the faith into us as you have, and I really do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, before we hear from the next speaker, I would like to lift one thing up. This young man right here, he got a full ride to Chapel Hill, but I also want to lift up that he was just offered a full ride to Indiana University for law school, so thank you.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Archie. I am actually standing in for Diana Harris, who is my sister. I am coming to you requesting funding for our seniors. It is on a personal level. My father was a firefighter for 30 years for the City of Charlotte, and he needed care, adult daycare, day and health care. I want you to know that we went through all of his savings within three years because there was no funding. Not only his savings, but our savings. There is so much of a need for our seniors. I listened to Commissioner Powell, you said something, a voice. I want to be that voice. Commissioner Leek, you said our seniors. Without them, there is no us.
Thank you.
It is so important that we take time out and we provide the funding that's needed for these seniors. I am so tired of finding seniors on the news because they walked off and no one can find them, because they had nowhere to go, because some of us who work, we want to leave them at home while we go to work and lock them in and hope that they're okay. When you have adult day and health care that is there to take care of them, they get breakfast, they get lunch, they get love, they get attention, and they come back home to their loved ones. You don't have to look for them, you don't have to worry about them, they're there. So I plead to you, I plead, I beg of you, to come up with funding for seniors for adult day and health care. I love that the children were here, but without the seniors, how do we get to children? You understand? I'm a parent, I'm a grandmother, but most of all, I've lost my heart. I lost my father to dementia. Would I change anything I've done? I would not. This is my first time standing before you. Didn't even know what I was going to say, but I'm listening, I'm listening, I'm listening. We've got to take care of our seniors, because I can assure you 100%, each and every one of you are going to be a senior. I can assure you that someone in here has a parent that has dementia. I can assure you that they may not be able to tell you what's going on, but I want to represent them and let you know what's going on. They need us, we need friends. Can you please help them?
Before you get started, Laura Cooper, Shobit Rindashurish, apologies for getting that wrong, Nancy Collins, if y'all can come down to this side.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jerry Kingsley, and I'm here to advocate for increased funding for the Parks and Rec budget on behalf of two groups. First, I'm the Vice Chair of the North Carolina Chapter of the Sierra Club, and I also chair the local Sierra Club here in Charlotte, and I represent the Sierra Club on the Steering Committee of the Charlotte Regional Transportation Coalition, a coalition of groups that advocate for transportation issues. I'd like to talk to you about greenways. I became a full-time bike commuter about 10 years ago when I began biking from University City into Uptown for work. Back then, there wasn't really a safe route, right? I found myself biking down North Tryon, this was before the Blue Line extension, there were no bike lanes yet, or I would get out on old were no bike lanes yet, or I would get out on Old Concord Road or out on the Plaza. It was dicey, it was a dicey commute. I'm happy to report that there are now much safer routes, thanks in no small part to the effort the county has made over the past 10 years to construct our greenway network. Thank you very much for that, but we're not done. And I believe that the pace can be quickened. As of November, there were five miles of new greenways opened in 2024, with 16 additional miles in design and construction. I'd like to see that doubled so that we're opening up to 10 miles each and every year, 10 miles of new greenways. The advantages are numerous. People use greenways for exercise, for pleasure, and for commuting. They spur economic development. A robust greenway system is a draw for Mecklenburg County. It really makes us an attractive place to live and to do business. And to top it all off, our county residents want more greenways. Every poll consistently shows that people place greenways very high on their list of priorities. The second group I represent tonight is the North Charlotte Historic District Association, more commonly known as the NODA, NBA, where I serve as a board member. I moved from University City to NODA about four years ago, and in that short time, the population has rapidly increased and more is coming. We have something like 3,000 apartment and townhome units currently under construction, and when completed, NODA will be one of the most densely populated areas in the county, and it borders two of the quarters of opportunity, both North Tryon and Sugar Creek, serving as major boundaries. I'd like to ask for funding specifically for the new Coleman Avenue Park as part of the increase in budget to Parks and Rec. The county already owns most of this property and has earmarked it for a park, but building the park itself seems to be lowered in priority each year, and it never makes it above the line, so to speak. It gets dropped each year due to lack of funding with the thought of, well, maybe next year. So with the increased and increasing population of NODA and a longest proximity of two of the quarters of opportunity, I'd like to specifically ask that the increase in the park and rec budget includes that park. Thank you very much.
And it looks like I may have missed Lucille Howard, so if you're here, please come on down to the right. All right, you can go ahead.
Is Lucille over here?
Oh, Lucille's always here.
Right, Lucille Howard can come on to the podium, but while we wait...
(inaudible).
Oh, okay. I have Laura Cooper, we'll be calling her shortly. Thank you. Oh, okay, wait, I'm sorry, we're to Laura Cooper, so go right ahead.
Good evening. I'm Laura Cooper, and I am speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Charlotte Mecklenburg. We urge you to continue to fully support the school board's funding request, as you have done for the last two years. As you know, the League closely monitors the school's progress. Teachers' vacancies are down, and test scores are showing improvement. This happened, in part, because the county funds have bolstered the school's critical need to recruit, but, and this was even more important, retain experienced teachers. In recent years, this General Assembly has consistently failed to meet its constitutional responsibility to fund our public schools. In 2011, North Carolina was 27th in funding. We are now 48th. The school board, excuse me, you, the County Board of Commissioners, has chosen to use a significant amount of our tax dollars to fund what we all value in this county, education. And we, along with students, parents, and employers who are looking for an educated workforce, applaud you. We know that our community's economic future literally depends upon educating our students so that they, in fact, will be able to fulfill a job and have a living wage. CMS has made considerable progress in improving student outcomes. It's even beginning to close achievement gaps. Based on last year's end-of-year results, there's some very good news. 146 schools, or 83% of the schools, met or many exceeded growth. This is the highest number of schools in the history of CMS. 108 schools earned a grade of A, B, or C, and the graduation rate increased to 84%, with significant increases for our Hispanic and multilingual learners. More students were at or above proficiency in K-2 literacy, and, most significantly, we saw a decrease in those achievement gaps between our white students and our black and Hispanic students. So as you consider the FY '26 budget, keep in mind that the significant impact the county tax dollars has in attracting, and, as I said, even more important, helping us retain our experienced teachers. The most important ingredient in student learning is teachers, especially experienced teachers.
Thank you.
Working...
Sorry, sorry, you have time.
No, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And...[959.23][959.23](applause) On this side, can Nancy Collins, Rachel Radar, Raider, and Timothy Jai's come down this way?
Hi, my name is Shabita Suresh, and I live in Southland, Charlotte. I'm a sustained Charlotte Ambassador. I also do sustainable fashion work for Spring Clean at the Innovation Barn. I'm a sustainability climate risk holder, and I'm the leader at Green Teams at my workplace. That's a lot of mumbo jumbo to say I'm a big advocate for the environment. I'm here tonight to talk about why it's so important to invest in our parks, greenways, and nature preserves. Parks and greenways matter to me personally. If you ask me my favorite place in Charlotte, I'll always say Freedom Park, followed by Lotta Park. These places have brought me tons of peace over the years, and I just elected to go carless, and the greenways will allow me to use a bike safely. These spaces bring people together and let people connect in ways that strengthen our community. I also think the growing problem of lack of third spaces makes it essential to preserve our green spaces, and they're also important for the whole community as a whole. Parks are essential for our mental health, physical health, they reduce stress, improve our well-being, provide safe spaces for exercise and recreation, and the greenways and nature preserves contribute to cleaner air and cooler temperatures, habitats for wildlife, which makes our city greener and more sustainable. Investment is critical now because Charlotte is growing, and we need to preserve and expand these resources for future generations. Parks and greenways are a huge investment in our health, our environment, and the happiness of our community. So I urge you to prioritize our funding for parks, greenways, and nature preserves. Thank you.
Thank you.[1077.23][1077.23](applause) Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties, sorry. Okay. Hi, everybody, I'm Rachel Raider. I'm with Climate Action and the League of Conservation Voters. Thank you so much for... I'm so sorry, I'm getting a little bit cold. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you today about this critical issue that affects every single one of us, the funding and protection of our public parks here in Mecklenburg County. Public parks are more than just green spaces, they're the beating heart of our communities. When you're having a bad day, you go to the park. At least I do. You know, you're going through a rough divorce, you go to the park, you know? You want to have a neutral place to meet, to talk to somebody you haven't talked to in a long time, where do you go? The park, okay? So also, so these places are pretty near and dear to my heart, obviously, but they're valuable to all of us, and I just want to, they improve our physical and mental well-being, they remind us of, you know, the profound beauty and importance of our natural world. But today, I'm here to highlight why public parks are also an essential matter of environmental justice. Environmental justice... Jeez, I'm so sorry, I don't know what's going on with my phone right now. Environmental justice is the idea that every person, regardless of race, income, or zip code, has the right to a clean, healthy, and safe environment. Parks are a cornerstone of this right, yet too often, we see disparities in access to green spaces that reflect deeper inequities in our society. Studies consistently show that low-income communities and communities of color have fewer parks, smaller parks, and parks in worse condition than those in wealthier, predominantly white communities. Here in Mecklenburg County, our public parks are a lifeline for thousands of families, and they provide free and equitable access to nature, recreation, common community spaces. They offer a refuge from urban heat, a critical factor as climate change continues to worsen, and it will get worse, it will be hotter, mark my words, it will be the hottest summer on record again this year, hotter than last year. So we must recognize that investing in public parks is an investment in environmental justice, and by ensuring our parks are well-maintained, accessible, and equitably, this is the key, equitably distributed, we are saying that every child deserves a safe place to play, every senior deserves a peaceful place to walk, and every family deserves a nearby spot to picnic, celebrate, and connect with nature. I also want to just say that shout... Oh, dang.
Thank you.[1268.83][1268.83](laughing) Great job. All right, Nancy Collins, Timothy Jai's last chance. All right, next group of people, Tim Minor, Carrie Beeman, Carrie Early, and Gwendolyn Forney. You can come to this side, thank you.
I am here to say thank you. My name is Tim Minor, I'm the co-founder of Charlotte is Creative, a nonprofit dedicated to assisting emerging creative entrepreneurs in Mecklenburg County. These are local artists and makers who strive to earn some or all of their annual income through their creative talents, but they need funding, connections, work, and training to get there. In 2024 alone, we gave out 82 micro grants, hosted 73 free trainings and events for creatives, hired more than 250 individual creatives for jobs, including collaborations with Parks and Rec. I do all this with my co-founder Matt Olin and our mighty team of five. I want to say also thank you for your commitment to supporting local arts and creativity. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, it was amazing and an honor to see you at our latest meeting of Creative Morning Charlotte in Matthews. I want to say thank you to all of you, because over the years, this commission has made investments that support arts at all levels, including empowering creative entrepreneurs to thrive as small business owners. That's not often how we think about arts and culture. One of those programs is our very own Creative Entrepreneurs Initiative, CEI. We have used this to benefit over 90 cohort members over the last three years, with 30 more set to participate this year, and hundreds of additional creatives who audit the more than 25 classes we offer as part of CEI. Each year, we combine training, community building, and microfunding for this cohort to equip them with the tools they need to succeed as businesses. In essence, our programs hand out fish and fishing poles and teach fishing lessons to contribute to economic mobility and help retain the incredible talent in our county, and I am not talking fast enough. A few examples of our creative entrepreneur graduates are Claude Whitfield of Backspins. He expanded after graduating his business of training youth DJs in District Two. One of his students alone has had over 80 million downloads and new contracts from across the world that he got after appearing on WBTV with us. One of those was a retweet from Snoop Dogg, it was awesome. Angela Colmer of Upcycle Arts opened a storefront for upcycling materials in District Four last year, providing affordable materials for local artists, and I'm way out of time. What I want to say is this, you have done a remarkable job of increasing funding to arts programs. I'm asking you to continue to do so with programs that treat artists not as charity, but as small business owners who pay taxes, who employ people who buy goods and services, who create generational wealth. You've done it before, and in the coming year, please think of arts and culture and creatives as small businesses too. Thank you.
Thank you.[1504.21][1504.21](applause)
Well, actually, it's not morning, good evening, everybody, and firstly, thank you for serving and neighbors, thank you for being here. I'm Carrie Beeman, and I've been a resident of Mecklenburg County for most of the last 40 years. And there are three things that I want to lift up to you tonight as you are really thinking about the budget, because it's a really big family budget. The first is outdoor space and safe transit corridors, secondly, affordable housing, and thirdly, taxes. When I first moved here to Charlotte in mid-'80s, I didn't have a car, and like that other guy with the Sierra Club, I rode my bike everywhere, from the university to Uptown to DeRida. There was less traffic back then and no bike lanes. In the '90s, I collaborated actually with the city of Charlotte and the planning department. We held workshops, and we actually got those racks on the buses that people enjoy now and began the bike lane striping. But it's not enough. I've actually seen two people get hit by cars right in front of me who are riding their bikes while I was a pedestrian. I've been a bicycle commuter for more than five years, and in the last two years, my own son got hit by a car while he was riding home from school on his bike. So it's really important that we use our planning in green space to provide safe transit corridors for cyclists and pedestrians, because not everyone has a car. I've been a taxpayer in Mecklenburg County for all of those 35-plus years and a homeowner for more than 20, and I got to tell you, the price of housing is expensive. I've lived more than 20 places in Charlotte on all different sides of the city. I need to move my mom and dad here, and I'm going to be hard-pressed to find someplace that they can live, even within 30 minutes of our home. I'll probably have to go more than an hour away because that's where their income level is. They couldn't qualify for that housing division that we were talking about earlier. And then lastly, taxes. I bike and commute, and I tell people all the time, when I was walking to work in Charlotte, everything that I saved on parking went toward taxes. Right now, I have to save enough for taxes every month, and the amount that I have to save and put aside for taxes is actually more than my first mortgage payment was here in Charlotte. So all of these things that I'm bringing up to you, they absolutely align with what others have been saying, and they all come back to being what is the livability of our community going to be like? So you know that you have an enormous mission, but I just ask you to think about these things as you're prioritizing things in that budget. Our outdoor space and safe corridors, our affordable housing, our taxes, and by the way, I'm actually a library donor as well.[1701.86][1701.86](laughing)[1702.86][1702.86](applause)
My name is Gwen Forney. I am Chair of Newly Organized Precinct 104, which is in the Hampshire Hill community that includes areas on the Plaza and the Plaza Extension. You may have heard in the news that Family Dollar's on the Plaza closed due to several fires in recent months. You may not know that there is a 121 HUD apartment senior living complex for a person 62 and older or disabled just across the street. It has been in the community, it has been in the community for over 40 years. These seniors were able to walk to Family Dollar to shop. There is a Dollar General down the street across Harris Boulevard, but it is too far for them to walk. There are bus stops available, but most will struggle to cover the cost. A monthly free transportation plan would be helpful. These seniors are on fixed incomes, and based on information from the apartment manager, they often struggle to provide food for themselves. Those that receive SNAP receive less than $50 per month. The manager tries to have canned... The manager tries to have canned food goods available for those residents. It would be helpful to have the support of Mecklenburg County Food Truck that supplies fresh produce to visit periodically. There is also a private Section 8 housing complex across the street from the senior living complex and other apartments in the same area. They house our working poor. As I spoke with one manager who was completing eviction paperwork, she shared that a food truck would be helpful for her tenants. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Early, just before you begin, let me call down Kimberly McGregor to this side, Rob Hillman, Kaywin Cheng, and Tamara Cornish to this side. Thank you.
Greetings to the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners and meeting attendees. My name is Kyrie Early, and I proudly organize various speakers to present this evening, and I am excited to shine my light on this very important topic. The HBCU Battle of the Bands event, featuring marching bands from various schools, is absolutely essential to the Mecklenburg community for a multitude of reasons, a few of which I will highlight tonight. Historically speaking, Tuskegee University started the first HBCU band in 1894, so there is a long and storied history to consider. Many of you have vast experiences in the CMS academic system, and some of you would agree that marching bands provide students an opportunity to learn, to appreciate diversity, and to value each other's unique contributions. Personally, I truly felt the universal spirit of music through my family at a young age. My mom and sister are performers and really embrace the art of music, singing, constantly making, and listening to music. I watched them lead a winning marching band program. I took those experiences to Morehouse College, where I first heard the House of Funk marching band at 17 years old. Without a skill of playing a specific instrument, I was so inspired that I began exploring the world of DJing, finding this personal bond with music resulting in a 21-year DJ career, and I'm still performing to this day. In my research of this topic, I discovered that students who participated in an after-school program providing four hours per week of music lessons and mentoring in high-poverty elementary schools not only learned to play challenging music with one another, but showed significantly improved reading and math scores after two years in the program. Additionally, brain studies show there is a relationship between the study of music and improvement in spatial-temporal relationships, leading to developments of larger planum temporale, the region of the brain associated with reading skills. Studies also show that music majors comprise the highest percentage of accepted medical students at 66%. Also, I found that musicians had a thicker corpus callosum, the nerve fibers that connect the two halves of the brain, which you can see if you look closely at the center of my ball head. In short, please strongly consider the funding increase that the HBCU legacy organization plans to submit. We track votes of those in power, and our future generations are depending on you. My wife and I are registered District Three voters with a desire to see our daughter experience these events every year, and that starts with adequately funding it now. Thank you in advance for your support.
Good evening, Chair, Jorrell Commissioners and County Manager Diorio. I'm Kimberly McGregor. I'm the CEO and founder of Sid Kimmel Educational Consulting. Thank you for the opportunity tonight for me to address you this evening. I am a four-generation educator, born and raised here in Charlotte, North Carolina, by a single mother who was a teacher, whose grandparents were also educators, and my great-grandparents were educators. While Sid Kimmel has had a remarkable five-year record of impact and results, we've been informed that our funding would be cut by 50% in fiscal year 2026. Sid Kimmel was founded based on my experience as a former school counselor, where I served at Title I schools. And my last assignment for the last six years before I started Sid Kimmel in 2019, I had a staggering student-to-counselor ratio of 1 to 725 scholars. To put this in perspective, the state standard recommends 1 to 250 school counselors per scholar. I realized that these conditions severely limited my ability to meet the scholars' needs effectively. This led me to my bold decision to step out on faith and start Sid Kimmel Educational Consulting while leaving Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, where I was dedicated to teaching SEL but simply did not have the time. You may ask, what is SEL? I get asked that all the time. It also stands for social-emotional learning, and it's the process of developing the self-awareness, the self-control, and interpersonal skills that are vital for school, work, and life success. Research shows that people with strong social-emotional skills are better able to cope with everyday challenges and benefit academically, professionally, as well as socially. In January 2020, I began my journey by supporting Youth and Family Services and the Economic Services Division. Thanks to the trust from the support of County Manager Diorio and Anthony Trotman, we launched programs that were designed to empower our most vulnerable scholars. I started out with a pilot of 25 scholars, and today I'm teaching 1,900 scholars a week. As of today, we are in Title I schools, one of which is University Park Creative Arts. And with Sid Kimmel's support, they progress from a low-performing F grade to a C grade. Sid Kimmel has created wonderful partnerships with principals and their teachers, as we are in the school's elective rotation one day a week for hour-long sessions. Thank you for considering Sid Kimmel in fiscal year 26.
Thank you.
First, I would like to request—well, that's just too late. Hi, my name is Robert Hillman. I want to thank you all, all of you on the council, for allowing us to speak today. What I was going to request, and it will come obviously in a few minutes, is that we give us a nine-minute stand. But my name's Rob Hillman. I sit on the Board of Directors for Queen City Robotics, otherwise known as QCRA, one of the best kept secrets in Charlotte. As some of you know, if you're on my Facebook feed, and you're about to know, because the season has started, that I'm extraordinarily passionate about experiences in STEM and giving young people an opportunity to be involved and engage in STEM, specifically in robotics. The—I'm here today with my colleagues from QCRA to request funding support for our transformative programming that involves first robotics. Today, we have our CEO, Kaywin Chen, and board member Tamara Cornish. Kaywin will make the case for supporting QCRA. Tamara and I will follow him with a few closing remarks. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. So thank you—for the board for—to give us this opportunity to talk about our program. So I want to start to talk about the STEM career, consistently ranking among the highest-paid field, offered wage typically two-thirds higher than a non-STEM job, and serves as a critical driver of economic growth and upward mobility for families striving to overcome economic hardships. These careers can be transformative, with demand for STEM jobs continuously rising, and a program like ours equip our students with the skill needed to strive in these high-demand jobs. At the QCIA, we participate in the first robotic program, first STEM for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. It is a 34-years-old program, and I use a robot as a sport to inspire students and promote STEM career. A 10-year study shows 63% of the first alum work in STEM field compared to 42 of their peers. Beyond technical skills, first teens operate like a small business, where students can gain life skill by managing fundraisings, resource design, manufacturing a robot, including the strategy for competition, as well as the practice of managing the logistics for their material, as well as for them to go to competitions. Despite these benefits, there is a 2,200 average annual cost for students to participate in this program. It remains a significant barrier, but it is comparable to other extracurricular activities like swimming team, like music lessons. However, for the family who barely make N-Smiths, this cost is prohibitive. That's the reason why we are here and asking for your support to make this life-changing possible and to accessible for all. The programs, in addition to teach the student the important life skill, help them to set up a good position to have a high-paying job to turn over their economic opportunity. There's also extra benefit of this program. Beyond individual benefit, this program has a broader community impact. According to the National Recreation and Park Association, after-school programs provide essential engagement for youth, deter risky behavior. Studies show 26% of juvenile crime is occurred between 2:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. Highlighting the importance of the structural supervised activity, robotic programs reduce unsupervised time, redirect energy toward positive goal, and foster essential life skill. Since 2011, QCIA has been expanding access to robotic programs with experience and infrastructure to meet growing demand, but we cannot do it alone. Your support helps—your support helps build a stronger, more inclusive community, where every student, regardless of their financial background, their financial circumstance, can explore their potential, contribute to society, and achieve economic mobility. Investing in QCIA creates a lasting impact for individuals and the community, aligning talents with opportunity for greater economic outcomes. And I want to yield the time to my colleague Tamara.
Thank you all for being here. You certainly have a tough job in front of you. My name is Tamara Cornish. I've lived and worked in Mecklenburg County since 2008. I've been a director with Queen City Robotics since 2021. As an attorney and operations manager of a local firm, I understand the critical importance of accessing a skilled workforce. One might wonder how STEM programs can benefit small businesses. To remain competitive in a rapidly evolving marketplace, small businesses need access to the same skilled employees that large corporations have. We too face cybersecurity threats in a dynamic environment influenced by artificial intelligence. Additionally, we require critical thinkers capable of collaborating effectively with our colleagues. Our programs not only teach STEM skills, but focus on building confidence, critical thinking, strategy, collaboration, and leadership skills, which are all crucial for the success of small businesses. Furthermore, when you have a student that's excited about programs like ours, learning in school becomes much more interesting and valuable to them. As a student that grew up in rural West Virginia, our schools had limited access to resources. The world beyond our community was far bigger than any of us had experienced. Programs that foster curiosity and skill development would have been a valuable asset to communities like mine. I've witnessed firsthand how these programs can change a student's perspective and confidence. Our community should support these opportunities, empowering students from all backgrounds to cultivate their talents, build valuable skills, and strengthen not just their own futures, but the well-being and prosperity of their families and communities. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you.
In Charlotte Mecklenburg County, we talk a lot about upward mobility. I will say to you that my upward mobility plan was funded through STEM opportunities. I was an engineer, as some of you may or may not know, and as a consequence of having been an engineer and having gained those technical skills and having been able to work as a technician, I've been able to move myself from a low-income, high-love home to where I am now, which is a taxpaying resident in Mecklenburg County for the last 27 years. Friends, I am concerned that young adults who can excel in STEM fields are not being put in a position to obtain the skills to take advantage of the opportunities afforded by STEM jobs. By way of example, entry-level technician jobs pay $25 to $35 per hour and do not require a college degree. What we ask for here today is that we would greatly appreciate your support for the transformative programs that we have, so the children of Mecklenburg County can excel and exceed. You can find out more about us at queencityrobotics.com. That's queencityrobotics.com. Thank you for your dot org, sorry, dot O R G. And I will say, what a wonderful board.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Clarrette Gray, Daniel—I want the clapping, please feel free to. Let me cut that off. Daniel Kazania, Billy Anderson, Kyle Queen. Y'all can come down on this side. Thank you.
Good evening to the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners and meeting attendees. My name is Clarrette Gray, and I'm a proud HBCU graduate of Spelman College and the mother of four college graduates, three from HBCUs. And I'm here tonight to share the impact on the community that the HBCU Battle of the Bands has had, and to share a statement from my son, John Gray. My name is John Gray. I'm a product of Charlotte Mecklenburg schools, graduating from South Mecklenburg High School in 2019. During my time at South MECC, I played the melophone in the marching band, which was PWI-style, and learned so much about leadership, music, and discipline. We spent hours upon hours perfecting music, formations, choreography for a seven-minute halftime show that largely went unappreciated by the crowd at the football games. Now, I'll let you know, he continued to play for those four years, participated in the course-style competitions, because his mother knew that he could get a band scholarship. All right, so I'll continue with his statement. While I was at South MECC, my mom and I went to see the Queen City, the then Queen City HBCU Battle of the Bands, and I had never been exposed to black collegiate bands growing up. Seeing people high-step, hearing the band, the power behind every instrument, and of course, seeing the drum majors sealed the show, inspired something in me. For the first time, I saw band differently. I saw legions of college students that were band kids, black band kids, playing black music for a crowd of black people. So often, I was used to being one of few black kids in band, feeling alienated for enjoying the sport. So when I saw that not only do black kids love to be band geeks, I saw how good we looked doing it. I don't think I knew at that age what impact that would have on my life. Being exposed to the HBCU bands motivated me to try at least one year of band at Morehouse College, my number-one choice for school, and the deal was sealed for me when he did indeed get a band scholarship. All the lessons and experiences I learned from high school followed me to college. For those that know, HBCU Band Camp is a test of anyone's will and determination, especially a freshman. But something about that pushed me through those long hours, lifting my knees with every step and parading through campus, instilled within me the strongest sense of pride that I've ever known. I continued band for my entire time at Morehouse and went on to serve as drum major of Morehouse College House of Funk marching band. Very proud mom. Since my time at Morehouse, I've moved on from marching and playing an instrument, but I'll never leave behind the discipline, pride, and duty that being in band taught me. The values of marching band are universal; they carry through to my professional life as well. I share my experience and perspective to say this: Marching bands, both HBCUs and PWIs alike, produce some of the most creative, hard-working people around. And when we are financially supported, it not only helps us deal with the cost of band, but it motivates us to keep pushing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniel Casaniga. I'm here to talk about the rising cost of housing, which is something that affects all of us. There are programs in the— There are programs in the budget for housing. You know, we saw one from Northwood Raven here today. And I understand you coordinate with the City of Charlotte as well on certain housing programs. But housing prices have increased faster than wages every year for the last thirty years. So it seems to me that the programs in place, they have an effect, for sure, but they do not solve the problem. So cities like New York and San Francisco, they're very expensive, but they did not start out that way. They also had programs that didn't fully solve the problem and slowly, every year, increased their housing costs until they got to the point that they're at. So another thirty years of not fully addressing the problem is going to make Charlotte just as expensive as New York City. And it's inevitable. And I think everybody knows it, you know? They go up. It's like clockwork. So when considering the new budget, I asked you to try something new to attempt to solve the problem. You know, just something totally different because what we're doing now is clearly not working. If there's no other solutions to present, I'll propose one then, quickly. So instead of public-private partnerships with companies that focus on luxury housing to maximize profits or dealing with layers of contractors and subcontractors that each take a slice off the top, I ask that you consider a solution that does not involve the private sector. So directly hiring salaried workers to construct housing. As a proof of concept, you could set up a pilot program to build a couple townhomes. I understand that there's a culture of privatization that doubts the abilities of the public sector. However, the government landed a man on the moon, and I think they can handle a couple of townhomes. From there, you would sell them at cost or setting up a housing co-op to rent them out. It's up to you. But ultimately, ultimately, I'm just asking that you try something, anything different from what we're doing now to address the problem and prevent us from reaching a New York City level of cost of living. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, and it is quite late, so good evening. Thank you so much for your commitment to our community. I'm here to voice my support for parks and recreation funding. My name is Billy Anderson. Most importantly, I am a mom of two, and I'm also an environmental activist. Tonight, I want to give you a glimpse into my life, but in relation to Freedom Park. Almost fifty years after the park opened, I went there to celebrate my first birthday. I explored learning what Charlotte was like. Decades later, I returned, this time with my partner and our dog in tow. We enjoyed warm-weather walks, festival in the park, and picnics on my birthday. Years went by, and the pandemic hit. Suddenly, Freedom Park became a respite from isolation, giving me and my friends ample space to socialize while being socially distant. Then the most amazing thing happened. Just like my parents shared their love of nature, parks, and green spaces with me, I too started to share it with the next generation. On my son's first birthday, we too took a glorious stroll in the park. Now my boys, two of them, run in the grass, play on the playground, and enjoy picnics while they marvel at the trees. It's all of this and more that has turned Freedom Park into a cherished place that I turn to. Like on the night of the North Carolina Utilities Commission hearing, when I advocated for renewable energy in place of gas-powered plants, the ones directly exacerbating my son's asthma. After speaking, I felt lost, defeated, and frankly, quite angry. So I drove to Freedom Park on my way home. I meandered in the paths, in awe of the park's beauty and honestly, the sheer fact that it existed, evidence that we can get it right. I sat in the Tree Charlotte honorary garden, feeling inspired by those who are currently working on building our tree canopy. Slowly, I felt more grounded, more inspired, and more hopeful. Yes, we all know about the economic, physical, mental, and environmental benefits of parks. But let's remember that behind those numbers are people. They're Mecklenburg County residents, people of all socioeconomic statuses, ethnicities, zip codes, and identities. We come together. Our parks are one of the few places that bring our county's residents joy and pride in something to do of all ages for no cost. Please understand that this love letter to our parks does not mean that they are enough or that funding currently is adequate. Instead, it's gratitude for what we have.
I'll go ahead and ask Brandon Green in Maryland's Stanwood, Phyllis Tilly, to come on down to my left. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Queen. I am a team coordinator with Public School Strong Mecklenburg. There are seventy-eight county chapters in North Carolina, and Public School Strong is expanding into other states. We stand in favor of and strive to support public schools so they may provide honest, accurate, safe, and fully-funded education to all children. We thank you for your recent support of CMS. Both bond is not the continuation of federal funding to our schools is now unknown. We know the brunt of fiscal responsibility for educating our children will fall on this body for the next few years. There is nothing more important in your budget, including an appreciation for books and nature, which I definitely share. But everything flows from early childhood education and K-12 education. Education and academics, continued education in the trades and techno-education as our highest priority. Thomas Jefferson didn't walk a perfect walk, but he talked a pretty darn good talk. Preach a crusade against ignorance. Establish and improve the law for educating the common people. The tax which will be paid for this purpose is not more than the thousandth part of what will be paid to kings, priests, and nobles who will rise up among us if we leave the people in ignorance. Thank you.
Is Brandon Green here?
Brandon Green is not here. He asked me to present in his.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Come on down. Thank you. Just, you will say your name.
Again, my name is Kyrie Early on behalf of Brandon Green. To the Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners, he is writing to request your support for the upcoming HBCU Battle of the Bands, an event that celebrates an extraordinary talent and rich legacy of HBCUs. As a graduate of Kentucky State University and a proud former member of the mighty marching Thoroughbred Band, he can personally attest to the life-changing opportunities that HBCU band programs provide. When he attended Kentucky State University, he marched on a scholarship that made it possible for him to pursue higher education, an opportunity he otherwise would not have had. Being part of the mighty marching Thoroughbred Band allowed him to travel, experience leadership roles, and learn valuable life lessons that shaped who he is today. These experiences are just a glimpse of what the HBCU band programs offer to students. Key benefits of supporting this event: Empowering students through scholarships and opportunities. The HBCU Battle of the Bands provides a platform for young musicians to showcase their talents and earn scholarships that open the doors to higher education. According to Americans for the Arts, young artists compared to their peers perform community service and participate in youth groups more than four times as often. Additionally, children engaged in arts activities for an average of nine hours a week are less likely to engage in delinquent or truant behavior. These statistics underscore the life-changing impact of arts programs, boosting local economies and promoting community pride. Hosting an event of this magnitude brings significant economic benefits to the city, attracting thousands of attendees who support local hotels, restaurants, and businesses. Beyond the economic impact, the event highlights the city as a vibrant cultural hub, showcasing its ability to host events that unite and uplift communities, celebrating the legacy of HBCUs. HBCU bands are more than musical ensembles. They are ambassadors of culture, discipline, and excellence. Supporting this event honors the traditions of those institutions and inspires future generations to continue their legacy. Thank you for your time and consideration again.
Thank you. So Phyllis Tilly, if you're here, come on down, and then we have a group of people. Are you Ms. Tilly?
I am.
Okay. Is Marilyn Stanwood here? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Great, all right. So on this side, let's go ahead and have this next group get ready. Roger Boyd, Trina Boyd, Bernice Clark, and Damian McCain. Thank you, please go ahead.
Good evening. This is my first time ever attending one of these, and I commend all of y'all. It is very not late this evening, so I will try to make mine as brief as possible since I've got three minutes and I love to talk. I am in District One with Ms. Powell, so I did travel a little ways to get here tonight, and I still got to get home. I am here on behalf of the need in Mecklenburg County for family assistance during the day. Night would be great, too, but when you have a loved one, as I do, that was diagnosed with dementia at sixty-two, it was at a time in our life when we were retiring and thinking to travel and spend time with our children and our grandchildren. And my husband's actually here with me tonight. I'm very surprised that he's not dozed off, but he has been very patient. He is non-communal now and so does need full-time care. But at the same time, if facilities like Gracious Living was not available, I could not actually serve my community. I am a chief judge for Mecklenburg County, so I do early elections and head up that group. And so having a facility for my loved one to go to has provided me an opportunity to give back to the community by way of elections. Also, through the recreation program, I volunteer at several different park and rec centers. None of that would be possible for me to be able to continue enjoying life, not only doing things with him and for him, but if those facilities are not here for us that are still needing to work or that are retired but are looking after a loved one full-time, we become hermits ourselves. I do a lot of activities, I try to do a lot of activities outside of the home simply because when I'm home, it is very silent at my house. There is no communication, there's no going to the movies or going out to dinner and talking about your day or basketball game, and he will sit there, but he knows nothing that's going on. So having a facility like Gracious Living in this area has just been a lifesaver for me. Joe has been there now for a little over three years, almost four years, and the attention that he has given, the time that they spend with him, if he needs to be shaved, if he needs to be bathed, I know that he's being fed and well taken care of, and so I can continue to be active in trying to enjoy my life and also know that my loved one's taken care of until I can get back to him. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Marilyn Stanwood. Thank you for listening to me. I stand here before you today as proud Charlotte resident. I am deeply passionate about our community. I am here to advocate for parks and recreations. Our parks, trails, and recreational facilities are not just amenities, they are the lifeblood of our city. They bring people together, they promote health, and they connect us with the natural beauty that surrounds us. I am not a native person from Charlotte. I arrived for a job, and then I saw the city and the trees, and it just kept me here. So I definitely think this is an essential part of Charlotte. Currently, I live in the suburbs by the White Water Center, and it's a rapidly growing area that needs lots of help. One of the most pressing needs in our community is the construction of bike lanes and sidewalks, but I hope you can have it in your radar somewhere, please. Visiting parks and greenways brings fresh air, outdoor activities, and peaceful moments to our lives. For me, these green spaces are more than that. They are where I play some muggie with my friends, with my team. We practice at Ramblewood Park, and it's the place where we gather, our friendships are strengthened, we challenge ourselves physically and mentally. I'm sure many of you have similar stories, whether it's a soccer game or a family picnic or just a quiet walk to clear your mind. All of these parks, we have so much to celebrate, but I know and we know Charlotte Parks and Recreations can improve a lot. We had a family trip this winter, me and my husband and my daughter. We visited some cities and other spaces and other parks. And my husband, he couldn't stop complaining about the lack of public bathrooms and clean water fountains in the places we visited. So I don't want that to be the feeling of people coming to Charlotte. These basic facilities are not luxuries, they are necessities, and that ensure our parks and trails are welcoming to everyone, to young families, senior athletes, and casual visitors, just like we were. There is a lot more about they make us happy and it's more attractive studies. Just please give us the money for the parks.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You have ten minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Trina Boyd. I'm the founder of Renewed Beginnings Home. We are a mental health facility here in Mecklenburg County that serves teen girls with mental health challenges. I have my partner here, Roger.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Roger Boyd, co-founder of Renewed Beginnings Home. I just want to share with y'all, as of last year, June twenty-twenty-four, in Mecklenburg County, had over four hundred children in foster care. However, the county faces a significant shortage of licensed foster families with only about seventy families available to accommodate these children. This disparity had led to situations where children have had to sleep in county offices due to lack of availability and placements.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bernice Clark. I am currently the operational manager of Renewed Beginnings, and we have.
Desire.
TT.
TT.
Or Tykeria.
Tykeria, okay. All right. So why are we standing before you? After opening our mental health facility, I quickly learned that the need is bigger than what we could imagine. Every week, we get referrals for girls we cannot service because we are full to capacity. Now I'm going to have Bernice talk about some of the things that we do at our mental health facility. You can come with me. All right. So at Renewed Beginnings, we focus on the structure, redirection, and therapeutic living of the children. We teach children with autism, ADD, IED, ADHD, as you can tell from the up and down we've been doing all night. Our clients exhibit many behaviors, which include but are not limited to physical aggression, verbal aggression, suicidal ideations. We also teach emotional regulation, communication, and social skills within our facility. We recently just opened a wellness center within the facility, and that allows our clients to properly utilize their learned coping skills through arts and crafts, music therapy, and productive physical activities. All of our staff here are certified in first aid, CPR, AED, med management, and a variety of other mental health degrees. We also teach proper etiquette because these are young ladies, and they'll eventually be young women. We also provide tutoring services, and we build self-esteem. Our core goal, basically. Our core goal basically is to just provide a therapeutic and loving homes for our clients. All right, so the impact of... How is this new group home is going to impact the economy and Mecklenburg County? So this home, new home that we are proposing, will clear the waitlist by 60%, reduce the number of teen girls going into youth detention center, and bring teen girls out of the mental health hospital and place them in a home environment. And how is the group home going to impact the economy and jobs in Mecklenburg County? So one of the things that we do pride ourselves in is that we do pay over what the typical group home or mental health facility will pay. So typically, right now, for this, for the new facility, it will be $18.20 to $22.00 an hour. We will need about 12 employees to run this new facility that we're proposing, which will result in a little over $414,000 per year being poured into Mecklenburg County. We also have a proposed facility, I don't know if you all have those slides, but it is a four-bedroom, two-bath, where we will be housing eight girls with your help to have this, we can have this facility open this year. We already spoke with zoning, and that particular facility is zoned for a group home. So I just ask for, to allocate funding towards this new mental health facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Winston Robinson. Susan Harden. Vivian Mighty. Just go to the end here, Jerry Hines and Derek Davis. Yes, sir.
Greetings. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to address the esteemed council today. My name is Winston Robinson. I am founder and executive director of Applesauce Group, a 501(c)(3) dedicated to creating culturally rich, inclusive spaces that empower our community and connect individuals with life-enhancing resources. These festivals take place from the historic Betis Four Corridor, about a half mile from my home in historic McCrory Heights, one of the foremost significant, historically significant communities in America, along the Betis Four Corridor, where we service upwards of 7,000 people per festival. At Applesauce Group, we have witnessed firsthand how meaningful experiential programming can change lives. Our events such as The Vibe Called Fresh and The Great West Side Fish Fry provide vibrant, authentic environments where attendees celebrate culture while accessing critical service such as financial literacy, workshops, healthcare screenings, and housing supports. Our organizations foster trust and belonging, which are essential for connecting people to the tools and resources they need to improve their quality of life. Annually, our orchard of collaborative organizations such as Dream Key Partners and For the Struggle significantly exceed their engagement goals by initiating contact with attendees in conducively tailored environments. Our approach rooted in experiential marketing leverages joy and community to disarm attendees and engage and encourage authentic engagement. When we, when people feel valued and welcome, they are more likely to explore available opportunities and establish connections that lead to sustainable, long-term outcomes. This method does not just create an attendance, large attendance, it builds trust, ensuring that these interactions have lasting impact. Aligning with, aligning the new and existing county programmatic efforts with creative marketing and communications will enhance bridging the gap between residents and vital resources that they need to thrive. Together, we can ensure that every member of our community has the access to opportunities that promote empowerment. Thank you so much for your time, your dedication, and your service to strengthening Mecklenburg County.
Distinguished members of the Board of County Commission and distinguished staff of Mecklenburg County Government, as you know, my name is Susan Harden, I'm a professor of education, I teach teachers, and I am a longtime public school advocate. I respectfully request two things. First, please strategically discuss the dire funding reality for local public education and local public pre-K. We know the state of North Carolina will not meet its financial obligations as legally required by LeAndrew, and has ignored the extensive needs of public schools by allocating, shockingly, $464 million in state tax dollars for private school vouchers, even though our state currently ranks 42nd among starting teacher salary. Secondly, the Trump administration has made clear its aim to abolish the Department of Education and reduce discretionary spending by millions. We can see it coming, y'all. We got to figure out how we're going to respond to it. I have never seen professional educators so fearful of losing our bedrock, and I mean bedrock, federal programs like the Individuals with Disabilities Act, Title I, and Head Start. We can see it coming. We have to plan. Federal funding accounts for $163 million in CMS funding in their budget. A loss of even a portion of these funds would be devastating for special needs or pre-K students. Therefore, the burden of increasing public support for education, as our colleagues have said, disproportionately falls on the county. You are the only funding agency that cares about public schools. It's you. And we're asking you to make a long-term plan as these programs, especially these federal programs, might erode. You are our hope. I look to the county as our hope, as a public advocate for education. Thanks for all you do, and respectfully ask that in this critical juncture, especially around federal funding for these programs, even other programs, that you make a plan for us. Thank you very much.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Vivian Mighty, and I am my mother's only child and her caregiver. My mother is up there. She's 96, she's been diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and she attends adult daycare. I'm here to address you and speak on the need for funding for adult daycare. We were here last year, and just wanted to remind you of the significance of the funding. Caregivers really need assistance. The seniors need assistance. I, and especially because they need to thrive. It's necessary, it's a must. As a caregiver, I often substitute to earn money to thrive. My mother needs socialization to thrive. She gets that at adult daycare at Gracious Living. I sometimes need to rest during the day to thrive. My mother needs socialization to thrive. She gets that at Gracious Living. I need to shop, do laundry, food prep, clean, make calls, go to doctor's appointments during the day to thrive. My mother needs socialization to thrive. She gets that at Gracious Living. We're blessed, mom's been going there for nine years, and she has been thriving. We are truly, truly blessed, but others are not. They're on a long waiting list to get funding so that they too can thrive. Things happen during the day. As you can see, it's late, and my mother's experiencing sundowners, but thanks to Deborah, the Gracious Living staff, Ms. Michelle, Mrs. Michelle Allgood, Mr. Allgood, and the many people on their staff, I can just name them past and present. They step up and they help. It's necessary. We experience burnout, and we can't always be there, but the funding needs to be there. I can scream it from the roof, we need help. Our seniors need help, the caregivers need help, and we just implore you. We spoke about it last year, but we didn't get funding. We really, really, really need it, and we thank you in advance for it.
Thank you. While our next speaker gets in place, we actually had three folks sign up, so I'll ask them to come down on this side. Jessica Holtz Apple, Van Toinet Savage, and Teresa Taylor.
Good evening, commissioners, and I'd like to say a great good evening to Ms. Lee, my church member. Pleasure to see you. I'd like to start off by saying, my mother also is a member of Gracious Living. She has dementia. And how it is, I want to first of all, give you a few statistics. Currently now, there are more than 6.5 million Americans who have dementia in this country. In another 20 years, 25 years, it'll be double that amount, just in this country. So the numbers are growing dramatically, and people are starting to suffer from dementia in ways that, you know, it's just sad. My mother, she developed this illness, I saw signs of it about three years ago. About a year ago, I had got a call from her husband, and he just couldn't handle her no more. So I had to take her to a facility, I later stayed there for about four weeks, and that's when she got her diagnosis with Body Louie dementia, which is terrible. Your life expectancy for people to have dementia is usually anywhere from three to 11 years, with the average being about eight years. Finally, COVID-19 increases the risk for people to get Alzheimer's and dementia. So, you know, I think it's very important that places like Gracious Living are available, because when my mother first came to live with me, I did not know what to do. As you can see, I pulled all my hair out, right? But I just had to make a joke, because it's not funny, but it's very serious, and I did not know what to do. I didn't know what to do. Thankful for the staff at Gracious Living who gave me some guidance and told me how I could deal with her, because I didn't know how to deal with her. You know, I have a military background, right? I raise my children, if I say do it, do it. If I say jump, how high, jump until I tell you to come down. But I can't do that with someone with dementia, I can't do that with my mother, I have to be gentle and loving and kind, and they taught me how to do that, along with my wife taught me how to do that. I did a lot of reading about the issue, and it's just really difficult. She's prior for Medicaid, she makes too much for Medicaid, but she doesn't make enough to live on her own, so she's stuck between a rock and a hard place. So it's very, very hard to get funding for people who have dementia or Alzheimer's. So I just, you know, come here as an advocate for Gracious Living, because they do such a wonderful job. My mother, when she goes there, she gets a smile on her face like I don't see when she's at home, because the staff treat her so kind, and they're so loving. And I am so grateful that I get the opportunity to see a smile on her face again, because most of the time, she's not smiling. Most of the time, she's just trying to make it through the day, and sometimes I just got to give her a hug and tell her she's going to be all right. And no matter what happened, I'm going to be there with her. But thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you, sir. Do you mind confirming your name, just so we can have the clerk's minutes be accurate?
My name is Jerry Hines.
Okay. So I guess maybe Derek Davis, last call?
Derek Davis, I'm speaking for Derek Davis. Didn't know until I pulled up. Again, my name is Deborah Archie. Derek Davis actually gave me a call, also looking for funding for seniors. Mr. Davis's mother is a retired school teacher, she is 91 years of age, very active, very alert. The need for Ms. Davis is socialization. Again, that falls into our seniors and getting funding. It is imperative that we understand, that we cannot just let our seniors go to the wayside. It is imperative. It is so often that they're dismissed, they're not seen, they're not heard, until something happens, and it shouldn't be that way. They should be able to live their best days with happiness, joy, and peace, not mistreatment, not being left behind, not being looked after, not getting medication, not, just not. It is important. So I plead on behalf of the Davis family, on behalf of Mr. Jerry Hines, on behalf of Ms. Mighty, on behalf of all seniors, please understand, it is a need. It is a need. So thank you for letting me speak again. I am going to be that voice. You're going to get tired of hearing my voice, you're going to get tired of seeing my face. It is a need, and thank you in advance.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Holtz Apple.
Good afternoon. I am Van Toinet Savage.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Am I okay? But I did bring you some literature, and I will leave with you guys tonight. I am a family childcare provider here in Mecklenburg County. I am also an owner for 42 years in Mecklenburg County. I have just been appointed as a commissioner for the state for the family childcare provider. We need for you, as Mecklenburg County commissioners and our county, to stand behind the family childcare providers in Mecklenburg County. We were the ones that stayed open during the pandemic, not pre-K. It wasn't pre-K, it was the family childcare providers and the center and the residents. We stayed open 24 hours. We serviced hospitals, EMT, we serviced your police department, your fire department, 24/7. Everyone else was at home, having some cookies and milk. So we are the ones that need to be recognized for what we do and how we move in our state of Mecklenburg County. I serve 100 counties. I am your North Carolina state representative as well. So I am in every county in our state, and I see what the family childcare providers are going through. We are decreasing light water to support the preschool program. Why is that? We have preschool programs in our own home. We take care of those children until pre-K started, and now they're taking our three and four-year-olds to start this pre-K program. Is that fair for a three-year-old to be put in a program? I don't think so, I don't think they're ready yet. If you look at the numbers, a pre-K three-year-old needs to be in a loving environment, not pushed around in a 12 to 15 children in one classroom. That's not fair to that children. We need to have parents' choice, choices for parents to say, I want to use a family childcare home. And we're here, there's 104 family childcare providers in Mecklenburg County. We serve Mecklenburg, Mid-Hill, Pineville, Huntsville, and our city right here. We have spaces, but are you allowed of us to utilize those spaces with those vouchers? No, they're not. They're charging our parents a co-pay of $500. 18-year-old parent, three children, $500? She worked from 2:00 to 11:00 at a standalone security job. Is that fair? No, it's not. The daycare cliff? Yeah, it was a daycare cliff, why? Because they have an overhead. But I brought some information, I will leave it with the clerk, and I will be back.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right, Ms. Holtz Apple?
Good evening. My name is Jessica Holtz Apple and I'm a relatively new resident here to North Carolina. And I am speaking for the increased support for parks and rec. In particular, I'm interested in enhancing what we do with our parks. So I've particularly visited the Greens and First Ward Park, which hosts the Earth Day celebrations. And something I've noticed, not only with Macklinburg, but like with Gastonia and all those, and it's pretty much everywhere I've gone. The parks, they're beautiful, but they're sterile. They're grass and maybe some trees, maybe a couple bushes here or there, maybe some squirrels. And I just look around and think, we could be doing so much more with our parks, with this land. And as already stated by the community and city council priority, you know, we want our native plants. But it's more than just putting maybe a couple beauty berries or like some holly bushes here and there. It's about creating layered ecological communities with both plants and insects, wildlife, and people. And the benefits of these become resource multipliers. When you have properly landscaped, layered parks, it encourages ecological learning, stormwater management, carbon sequestration. It decreases the heat island effect, which is, helps with spillover effects into other areas. And just generally, it encourages like citizen scientists, especially in children, to go and explore these wider areas of environmental life. I mean, how much fun would it be for those kids to be like, look at these quility bugs? Or like, look at these different kinds of bees? Like, let's go find how many bees there are. And you can't do that with just the occasional little glimpse of plants. So I would like to see us use those resources and money to further develop what we do with our parks. And, you know, I could turn this into like a whole college lecture of the benefits of doing more with the land. But instead, I'll just say, if we humans have to live in a multitasking, competing deadlines world, then so can our green spaces. And let's make them into the resource multipliers they can be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our final speaker of the night. Thank you for your patience.
Hi, I know everybody's ready to go home because I am. Good evening to you all and thank you all so much for allowing me to speak. This is my first time coming to a meeting. My name is Teresa Taylor. And I'm here this evening as a concerned citizen, educator, and advocate for adult care programs. As I agree with all who spoke in this evening regarding adult care, it is a very vital part of the community, particularly for members who have dementia and other concerns that may be mental or physical. This is my mom. She passed December 16th with dementia. She was 86 years old. Had it not been for the funds that she was able to receive from the county to go to daycare, I would not have been able to afford to send her. It was a very part of her social, a vital part of her social life. It kept her happy. It kept her engaged. It kept her motivated to live. I just ask that you all please consider, with your heart and with the budget, continuing and increased funds for adult daycare. My mom attended Ray's Place off of Independence. It's a wonderful, wonderful daycare and they took such good care of my mother. We had birthday parties. We had dances. We had fun. And mom enjoyed the rest of the life that God gave her. Thank you all for your time. God bless you. I appreciate your service. Good to see you, Commissioner Dunlap. Long time, long see. Thank you all. God bless and have a good evening.
All right. At this time, I'll take a motion to close the budget public hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Having been, the motion hasn't been made and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes.
Turn the gavel over?
Yes, sir. Very much. Turning it over.
Great job, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you so much. So we're going to move along with the agenda. Next up is staff reports. We got information from our attorney earlier about this. So at this point, I'll take a motion to approve the resolution pursuant to NCGS 143-805. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any unreadiness? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. That is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Next. And I want you guys to stay with me on this one, please. Stay with me real quick. Is there a motion to approve the consent items that were not pulled?
Yes, sir.
Second.
So moved?
Been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Leake.
I would like you to mark these and we will get a report at the next meeting, if that's all right with you.
That's fine. Commissioner Leake?
All right.
Read them off, please.
If you mind.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. 25005. 25007. 250013. 250023. 250024. 250033. 250036. 250037. 250041. 250043. 250044. 250045. 250054. And the last one is 2506069. I so moved that these will be given to us by staff at our next meeting.
Is there a second? So just for clarification, go ahead, Commissioner. I wanted to clarify what she was trying to do.
I want to clarify too, what she said.
So what we were trying to do, as you all are aware, there were a ton of consent items. Commissioner Leake typically likes to make sure that the community and her district have visibility to items that are really important to them and to the rest of the community. Because of the late hour and the way the agenda was set, she's agreed to flag these items and move them to the next meeting to be able to be reviewed at that time, so that we could speed up our time here.
Okay. So what does that do for the next meeting when you have additional items that will be added to that part of the agenda?
Well, typically, we would not have, we'll have, these are going to be a part of that. But typically, it would not be the same number of consent items that we've had. We had a myriad of consent items tonight, simply because we hadn't met in so long. So there were a ton of them on there. So now, this will be just moved there to allow us to speed up the time as opposed to going through 15 consent items tonight.
All right, I'll second her moves.
Thank you.
So that I'm clear, Mr. Chair, though, my understanding was that Commissioner Leake wanted information about these items, but they were approved. If they are approved, then you get information. It's not coming back on the next agenda for action. The action has been taken tonight. You just want information about the item that have been pulled.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. What I've committed to, or I've agreed to, is to make sure that Commissioner Leake provides visibility to the community around these items. Since she was gracious enough not to pull them when everyone else wanted to move this meeting along speedily and were concerned about these consent items. And so I wanted to make sure that she has the ability to be able to deliver this to the community.
Well, I'll second her motion so we can move on.
Thank you. You did. Thank you.
So I just need clarity before I vote. My understanding is that we're going to vote yes to approve all the consent agenda items?
No.
No, that you've already done that.
Already did it. I was going to say. You already approved the consent agenda.
Approved the consent items?
We've approved them. These are items that we want to allow her at the next meeting to be able to go and tee up to the community.
I get that part. I totally get that. I just want to make sure all the consent agenda items listed are approved.
He just told you that. They were approved.
Told you that.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, they just said it was approved.
So how are they going to get back on the agenda?
Because she's going to, either through, not on the agenda, through commissioner reports. Well, let me back up. She wants to get information still from staff about these items. She has questions about these items.
They involve money and they involve contracts.
Okay. And so what she will have leeway through her commissioner report, I will defer time. Commissioner Griffin has decided to, has said he would defer time to where she can address them during commissioner reports.
Those commission reports.
So there will be a time where she can address whatever those items that she wants to address with the staff responses.
So I'm assuming then that that information will be provided to Commissioner Leake prior to the meeting next week?
Right to the next meeting. That's correct.
Yes, exactly. I don't know why it's hard to understand.
Well, it's because the way that I explained it, Commissioner Leake. So nonetheless, there's been a motion. It's been properly seconded.
Can I get a clarification on the motion, please?
Yes. Do you want to clarify, do you want to clarify that motion?
I think the attorney have clarified it explicitly.
She wants clarification, as she typically would get, Madam Clerk. We can compile that information, provide it to her, and she can discuss it during the commissioner's report at the next meeting.
I can't believe this. I cannot believe this.
I want to make sure I'm clear now. So all of the consent items have been moved and adopted. They've been approved.
Correct.
What I understood the chairperson to say was that during our typical commission reports, Commissioner Leake will have extended time to bring forth those items that she wants to discuss.
We are going to defer our time. So it's not going to be extended time, right? It's going to be within the normal hours. For her, it's extended time. That's right. That's right. All right. Is there any other discussion or questions? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight to one, Madam Clerk. Thank you. All right. Next, commissioner reports. I will start with Commissioner Griffin.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Altman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just say very briefly to update the board and the public that today, the Metropolitan Transit Commission met and CAT staff put forth four, I believe it was four scenarios for how we might be able to prioritize various transit plans that we could do. So keep your eyes open for that. It's a really important community conversation we need to have over the next couple weeks and months. And feel free to reach out to me if you'd like that information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dunlap.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I simply wanted to report that I was able to attend, well, I didn't really attend the inauguration, but I went to DC for the purpose of attending the inauguration until the plans were changed. But I did have the opportunity to participate in several activities during the inauguration week. I was there to represent the National Association of Counties, which is a nonpartisan organization establishing a relationship and rapport with the incoming administration so that we can carry out the business of the counties. Yes.
Commissioner Leake? Commissioner Leake?
Thank you. As has just been stated about the inauguration, it was on television. And many of us have attended inaugurations, which was, happened to have been those that we preferred to attend. But there was a different flavor in this one than previous ones. And those of us who have been active over the years in politics saw a different meaning of the democratic process than as it is today. And it's exemplified right around this table. Part of it is exemplified right around this table. So there are some serious concerns about the leadership of the Democratic Party, those who are elected, whether they are committed to the party, or whether they're going to continue to address issues that they have in the past or follow the new leadership of a new president. So I needed to say that to say that there are those of us who've been out there here in this fight over the years see the flavor has changed with the leadership that has been elected, the quality of the leadership, and what the leadership stands for. So we are word as black elected officials across this state and across this country about what the future will hold for education, for health, and other issues that pertain to those of us who are minorities and who are black. So we can take it for what is worth. I think I'm talking old timey, but if you live long enough, you'll feel it. It's right here between the nine of us.
Will you finish, Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
No report.
Commissioner Meyer?
No report.
Commissioner Townsend England?
Brief report that I'd like to defer until next.
Segregated report.
Mr. Rodriguez McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a moment to refresh people. I think it's extremely important, right now in this current climate that we're in, that everybody understands their rights, especially our residents who are immigrants. And I just wanted to briefly state these rights. Number one, you don't have to open your door when ICE comes to your door. They do not have a right to enter your house without a warrant signed by a judge. Number two, you can ask them to leave. If they do not have a warrant, you can ask them to leave and you do not have to consent to a search. Number three, you can stay silent. The Fifth Amendment means you can remain silent and not incriminate yourself. Number four, you don't have to share personal information such as your immigration status, your place of birth, your criminal history, if asked. Anything you say can be used against you. You should not lie. Number five, you do not have to sign anything or hand over any documents. You are not obligated to sign anything without speaking to an attorney. Number six, you have the right to speak to an attorney and you should ask for one. I just think it's really important that all of us understand these rights as it pertains to others. It may not affect us, but it affects a lot of people. So I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to state these rights. And I hope that if anyone has questions, they can reach out and I'm happy to point them in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. I just got two things really quickly. Number one, I think this has been, in some ways, a really great night and in some ways, a disappointing night. But I'm going to focus on the positive. From a positive perspective, I think it's fantastic that this board made a decision, I don't know if it was a year ago or two years ago, but we made a decision to make sure that we had a budget hearing prior to going to the retreat. And so I hope we all received a lot of really good information that will allow some substantive dialogue as we move into the retreat next week. I know the manager and staff have worked really, really hard on my big ideas to try to make some level of changes or doing things maybe a little bit differently than what we've done. And I know it's been challenging. But I thank you all for your commitment to trying to get the best out of us, to produce the best product for the community. So I do want to publicly acknowledge you all and say thank you. I am excited about next. I am excited about next week. I think it's going to be an amazing time, and so, uh, I hope everybody's ready. I hope everyone will come in a spirit of camaraderie and understand that we are colleagues and that while we have differences, those differences have made a huge impact, positive impact for the community. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moving, moving properly seconded. Any unreadiness? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Good night.